Good evening. We are starting our Tuesday, July 18 regular meeting. I will have our city clerk do our roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe?
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine?
Present.
Councilmember Retuja Ndepore? Councilmember Rochino Farrell?
Here.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb, please make a motion.
I'll motion to excuse Councilmember Ndepore from tonight's meeting.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Councilmember Stewart, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Howe, do you have the land acknowledgement?
I do. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the so-called Indian tribe, and that we thank these caretakers. Sorry, I don't have my glasses on, I'm doing the best I can. And we thank the caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. Next, I will undertake a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Second. All right, moved and seconded, and any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up, we have public comment, so we'll start in the room. All right, we have Jan.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city councilmembers. I'm Jan Molinaro. I'm the mayor for the city of Enhamclaw, but I'm here tonight as your Sound Cities Association president, and I want to address three specific items on SCA. First off, I do want to thank the city of Samamish for being a valued member of SCA. We thank you for your partnership, and as you know, you do have a voice in the region with SCA. Secondly, if you haven't already attended an SCA networking event, we do have one coming up on Wednesday, July 26. It has limited seating. It's going to be held in Bellevue at the Amazon Everest Building. It's going to be on their outdoor rooftop, so we encourage you to attend. If you can't make it, we do have other events coming up this year that we hope you will be able to attend. These networking events are really a great place to listen to our invited speakers, learn on various topics from these speakers, but more importantly, associate and develop new relationships with your fellow electeds, as well as the business partners that really make SCA part of what we are. And lastly, to conclude, I know there are four councilmembers that are currently serving in conjunction with SCA boards and commissions, and I thank you for that. I think that's fantastic participation. And as you probably know or may not know, we do have 27 different opportunities for city councilmembers and mayors to serve on, to name a few, Regional Transit Committee, Puget Sound, Regional Council, as well as Affordable Housing. I won't go into the other 23 for obvious reasons, but I do appreciate those who are here and serving because this does provide not only you the opportunity to make an impact for the region, but for your city as well. And with that, I thank you for your time and thank you for your participation. And if you do have any issues you do want to talk to me about, you can contact me, cityofenhamclaw.net, and find the mayor, and be happy to have a communication and topic discussion with you. Thank you, all. Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, anyone else in the room? Okay, we'll move to Zoom.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you would like to give comments for the public hearing, do not raise your hand, and you will have an opportunity to speak when the council reaches the public hearing on the agenda. I do not see anybody's hand raised at the moment.
Summertime, perhaps?
Pardon me?
Summertime.
Back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next up, we have an executive session. Land acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1B, and council may take action after. So I do see 15 minutes. Does that sound accurate?
Actually, Mayor, we can go ahead and reduce that to five.
All right. Okay, let's be back. I mean, let's do 6:42 by the time we get back there. We'll be back in seven minutes. No, six. Okay, thanks. Let's welcome back council. Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, I moved to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sales agreement on behalf of the city, and substantially the form recommended by the city attorney's office and the city's real estate consultant to acquire King County parcel number 222-4069064 and 222-4069065, located at 5124 Iskwa Pine Lake Road Southeast in Samamish, Washington, including all improvements on this parcel for the sum of $1,450,000.00.
Second. All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you, Councilmember Trine. Next up, we have our consent calendar.
Hi, motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. Now we have our proclamation for our National Night Out. Do I have a volunteer to read that one? Councilmember O'Farrell?
National Night Out, August 1, 2023. Whereas National Night Out is an annual campaign for community building that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie, and whereas National Night Out enriches the relationship between community members and law enforcement by providing a great opportunity for the police and neighbors to gather under positive circumstances, and whereas National Night Out is designed to strengthen neighborhood spirit in crime-prevention campaigns, generate support and participation in local anti-crime efforts, heighten crime-prevention as well as bring awareness and send a message to criminals that neighborhoods are organized and will be fighting back, and whereas neighborhoods whereas neighborhoods throughout Samamish are invited to join forces with thousands of communities nationwide for the 40th Annual Night Out, and whereas communities have fought Night Out to be fun, enjoyable, yet effective way to promote police and community partnership in our city, now therefore be resolved that Mayor Kaylee Clark, on behalf of Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim August 1, 2023 as National Night Out in the city of Samamish.
Great, thank you. All right, next we have a presentation for the Classification and Compensation Study results. I don't know if you're leading that, Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll kick it off while Mark Baird, Administrative Services Director, and Katie Bush, our consultant, get queued up. So for context, a class and compensation study is a way to measure how we are doing with our peers in terms of what we offer our employees, and it is good practice to do it every three to five years or so. The city has not completed a class and comp study for over 10 years, so we were long overdue, and when I started here with the city and our union partners had just been established, this was one of the pieces that they raised as a strong issue for them to complete, and so as part of that partnership, we made it a priority to do that work and bring it forward. So this is the report from our consultant on the report itself, and bear in mind, this is just the actual analysis, and this is not any sort of implementation or anything else. This is a report. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark and Katie Bush, who is our consultant.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. In the interest of time, I will quickly just introduce Katie Bush from HRCC, who is our consultant who carried out the classification and compensation study on behalf of the city. She is here this evening to present the results of their work. Katie?
Thank you very much. Sound check? Everyone can hear? And you can see my presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for allowing me to present this evening. Our company, HR Compensation Consultants, has had the opportunity to do work over the course of the last 30 years with cities, counties, and state agencies across the United States and in Washington County. One of the goals of putting together a new classification and compensation plan, or as we like to refer to, a new job and pay framework, ultimately is to ensure that during the employee lifecycle, the organization has good guidance on making pay decisions, pay decisions that are internally equitable, externally competitive, and ultimately fiscally responsible and aligned with the organization's mission, vision, values. A copy of this presentation will be provided after the meeting today, but I do want to walk you through some of the details of our process. We started back in January of this year, focusing first on the job study, getting to know the organization, getting to know what's happened in the last few years, and understanding the alignment of jobs at Samamish. We then turned our focus to the outside to do market research, and I'll share with you the organizations that were included in the salary and benefits survey. In May, we put those two pieces together and created a completely new job and pay framework for the organization. And given this opportunity to review this with you, and then subsequently with the HR department, we will be providing a full report in August for your consideration as you work through things like approvals, budget, contract negotiations, et cetera. The implementation would be expected if approved in January of 2024. We've had a lot of employee and management involvement throughout the process. The management team was involved in the very beginning in providing us an overview of changes that have happened in their department through a department questionnaire, where we also asked for feedback around recruitment and retention difficulties. We wanted to understand who they were competing with for talent and where people leaving the organization may be going to. The entire organization, we got an overwhelming response from the majority of employees who completed a position questionnaire. Now, this position questionnaire is focused on the job content, so employees were able to provide information specifically about their jobs and share with us what has changed over the last few years. This allowed us to understand the current organization charts, job descriptions better, so that when aligned to the new job framework, we could also create updated job descriptions. We also had the opportunity to meet with department directors, and often their deputy directors came to the meeting as well to provide additional detail. We had those conversations back in March to understand all of the different jobs that are performed at the city of Samamish. Even though we've done work for many different cities and many different cities in Washington State, we don't want to assume that every organization is staffed or organized the same way. Then back in April, the HR department took the job maps, draft job descriptions, and suggested title changes that may have come from employees as they describe their work or things that we're seeing in terms of the labor market, and reviewed that information again. Today, and then also again tomorrow morning, with all staff, we'll have the opportunity to do this presentation and to share the results and recommendations of our study. The position questionnaire gathers information about employees' jobs, and that information was used to update the job descriptions. So when we provide the final versions of each of the job descriptions, then Samamish HR will make those available to the organization. Those department director meetings were extremely helpful in understanding not only recruitment and retention challenges, but also internally how jobs aligned and what sort of career progression opportunities were available. As an outside consultant, we don't measure performance, so we don't measure how well someone does their job. We measure the job itself, the work, not the holder of the work. And so looking at all of these different factors, which were included in the position questionnaire, we've organized jobs into people manager versus individual contributor, and within the individual contributor role, different roles like associate, technician, and professional-type positions at all different levels within the organization. So each and every job, and here's an example of the Public Works Department, each and every job, regardless of its union affiliation, is evaluated against a standard benchmark. So the standard role and level descriptors serve as the guide for which all jobs are evaluated. So we're not evaluating jobs against each other, we're evaluating them against a standard. That allows us to really get to know the organization and to know the jobs before we then look to the labor market, which you see there in the lower right-hand corner. These are the organizations that we recommend be included in your regional labor market. Now, as we looked at these other organizations, is that many of them have jobs that are similar to yours. In fact, we were able to match 46 jobs in the represented group and 37 jobs in the non-represented group. Overall, really solid number of benchmark positions to serve as a strong foundation for creating a completely new pay structure. What we found is that your current salary schedules and pay grids, they're about 3% below the market average of this particular group when you look at the midpoint value of the pay ranges of what others are offering. You'll need to continue to make an annual investment to move to and maintain an above-market-average position. Given the balance of cost of living and the cost of labor, we recommend an above-market-average position in terms of the structure to really make sure that Samamish is in a great place to not only recruit, but also retain staff. Now, the good news is, when we turned our attention then to individual pay and how employees were being paid, given that 60% of the existing employees' staff is paid towards the upper end of the current salary schedules and pay grids, that means that overall their pay is market competitive. We also did a benefits survey, which covered these various areas. Primarily, we were looking for anything that would stand out as being a competitive advantage or a competitive disadvantage. We didn't find anything that was overwhelming, but the information will be provided so that you can work with your benefits consultant as you look at benefit strategy over time. The benchmark positions, again, very strong matches in the labor market, serving for a very strong foundation for our recommendations. What we are recommending is an integrated pay plan. So right now, the represented and the non-represented jobs are in separate pay grids. We evaluated all jobs against one set standard of the internal equity classification system called the role and level methodology. So all jobs were evaluated using the same method, and we recommend that you continue to use this method going forward as jobs change or you add new jobs in the future. In terms of market position, we do recommend using an above-market-average position. So this will take your structure and place it in just a little bit above-average position relative to minimum, midpoint, and maximum pay in a relatively competitive labor market, with many of those organizations having high costs of living like yours. The new pay structure is completely new, so it is not related back to your current structure. It's a new set of pay grades from 1 to 11. We would also like to recommend that the organization consider moving away from a step plan. The step plans lock you in in terms of pay administration. If you have open pay ranges, a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum, you can still administer pay and reward performance annually and still do cost of living adjustments to the structure, but it allows you more flexibility in terms of the percentages that you use based on macro and micro-level market indicators. And the differences between grades, we really think those should differ based on the value of the benchmarks that are assigned to the different pay grades. I know this chart has a lot of numbers. It'll be much easier to read when you're looking at it in hard copy, but just to orient you on the left-hand side, this is a summary by grade level of the market average, minimum, midpoint, and maximum for the benchmarks included in each grade level. The market position that you see in sort of the brighter green there in the middle, that provides us a guide to establish an above-market-average position. So that number will range anywhere from 3% to 7.5%, but as you can see in the by-grade level, the percentage that we recommended you use in developing this structure. So the market average midpoint on the left, the market reference point in the middle, and then over on the right-hand side, the proposed midpoint, all relate to one another. So if the market average midpoint down at the bottom there, pay grade 1, market average midpoint is 51.5, an above-market-average position would place that midpoint closer to $55,000. And based on all of the benchmark data that we looked at as we developed the proposed structure, this is where the science and the art come together in pay plan design. We recommended a midpoint for pay grade 1 of $55,000. So the entire pay range, $46,004, $55,000 for a midpoint, and a maximum of $63,600. Remember, every single job has a role and level assignment, so therefore every job and role and level are tied to a pay grade. Every pay grade has a pay range assigned to it. That's how all of this comes together with balancing the internal equity and the external competitiveness. Just as a refresher, and this is a different department, this is the Community Development Department, so that you can see, if you look, for example, in the long-range planning column, in the second column all the way down, if you start at the bottom and work your way up, this really gives a nice visual, not only for employees to see where their job is located today and what their opportunities are for career progression in the future, but also as directors are evaluating their organizations, looking at new or changed positions, this in essence gives them a roadmap to work with as they evaluate their jobs over time. The implementation of this new plan, based on what you will be paying people, an estimate at the end of the year, if you use this new open-range salary schedule, there are eight employees' pay who is under the new minimum, and that pay should be adjusted. That's a one-time cost of approximately $25,000. There were some title changes that were suggested by us and then also by employees as we evaluated those based on the information they provided in their position questionnaire and changes that we're seeing in the labor market. So we would recommend for implementation January 1 that you would make those title changes as well. And of course, to maintain your competitive stance, aging the salary schedule per your annual COLA, which I understand is part of your budgetary and negotiation processes, and certainly continuing your performance-based increases for those individuals who are not already at the maximum of their pay range. That's how you were able to maintain a general sense of overall competitiveness in a very, very active market. So aging the salary schedule going forward and continuing your performance-based pay increases would be part of our recommendation. You'll use this new information, certainly the city will, when they're making hiring decisions, when they are making pay decisions about people who are being promoted, et cetera. So all of this updated structure will become very handy and support the overall lifecycle of the employees. In our request for proposal that we responded to, these are the major items of our project's final deliverables that will be provided later in August to the city. I'm happy to answer any questions and to go back to a particular slide, if that's helpful, to answer the question.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. One question. Is our attrition rate on par, higher, lower than the surrounding cities in the region?
I don't know, Mark, if you want to answer that off the top of your head. I know that's something that you all look at on a regular basis in terms of your own attrition rate. I will tell you, in the data that we found, that we collected that information back in February, so at this point, it's probably better, Mark, if you answer that.
Sure, thank you, council. You know, anecdotally, as we talk with other HR professionals in the region, we're all kind of experiencing some of the same challenges and some of the same movements. It really kind of depends upon the position and the demand at the moment. This is an element that was a little bit outside of the class and comp study, so HRCC didn't particularly take a look at how the hiring and attrition rates compared. They were looking purely at the classification and compensation.
Okay, because I'm curious why we would propose having our midpoint be 5% to 7% higher than the midpoint? And is there any data that suggests that having a higher midpoint salary range is going to assist us in reducing attrition, or what is the benefit of doing that?
So the above-market-average position, let's just go back real quick and look at those organizations. They're down here on the lower right-hand side. So these organizations in the region will also be updating, if they're not in the process of updating their schedules as well. So in looking at the average of minimum pay, midpoint, and maximum, placing your structure in the middle, right this very moment, at this particular moment in time, is putting it in a place where your, that means half of the organizations are paying above, and half of them may be paying below. Depending on the flexibility that they have, many of them have to hire above the minimum. So if they have an open-range plan, they can hire above the minimum. If they have steps, many of them are able to hire in at step 2 or 3, depending on the qualifications. So the structure itself is meant to give that overall guidance. If it is at the average of this particular group today, it may not be capturing all of where you would want to be for each and every benchmark assigned to a particular grade.
So you looked at the other cities' schedules, not what people are actually being paid in the region?
Correct.
Oh. Well, shouldn't we look at what people are actually being paid to determine what the midpoint of a particular, as opposed to just the schedules?
That was, you can imagine, people are paid according to the schedule. So there's an entry level, a middle, and a maximum of all of their schedules as well.
But we don't know, to your point, people could be hiring in at higher levels or not. So the real midpoint is how many people are actually making that in a particular job, right?
So in pay structure development, the typical compensation technique to use, given the amount of variables in hiring decisions beyond your knowledge or your control of the 10, in this case, organizations that were included in the survey, the best practice is to evaluate the range structure based on comparing apples to apples, so range structure to range structure. Those range structures actually are different Those range structures actually are different widths. And so that's part of the reason why our focus is on the number in the middle. But imagine an organization that has its own recruitment and retention challenges. Each of these organizations has experienced those at different rates and in different ways and for different positions over time. And so there's a lot of variables when you begin to focus in on what they're actually paying an individual in a job and using that as your point of reference versus using the established schedule, which you know they're paying someone in between the minimum and the maximum of those two numbers. So that's part of the reason why we focus in on structure versus actual pay.
Okay. I guess I I'm just curious why we would want to go above the average if we aren't necessarily experiencing higher attrition than other cities, right? So that's just curious to me. Thanks.
Councilmember Howe?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I could we go back to the benefits slide for a second? Because I know you covered this, but I just wanted to understand from a competitive point of view, how are we with benefits? Are there other benefits that you've seen out there that you find would be potentially compelling? I realize there's a cost associated with those. However, oftentimes that package, the whole package, can be truly something that wants to, you know, will anchor somebody. Sometimes it has to do with, you know, the flex, just not a flexible spending account, but some flexibility in their schedule. You know, just is a huge thing, I would think, but curious if you've got some input there.
Yeah, so what we look at, when we're looking for benefits comparisons, is we're looking at all of these different elements, but we're looking for things that where Sammamish would stand out and would be considered to be competitively ahead of the market, if you will, or doing something that others are not, or the opposite, you know, where others are doing things that that you're not. So generally, what we found is that you are in the ballpark in terms of the methods that you're using, the programs that you're offering, the processes that you have, and the values that you're offering, whether it's a percentage or a dollar amount. Benefits decisions and the value of benefits are very personal. And so one of the things that is important to understand is what is offered by the others and whether, from a programmatic perspective, there is anything in particular that stands out. We did ask about like the fitness and wellness benefits, for example, and even the remote work options and flexibility. So we have all of that information from these different organizations, and we provided that to the the HR department as they work through the overall benefit strategy, to your point about cost and programs and process, identifying one particular area where you may want to do something different or improve also then has an impact potentially to other areas as well. So we provided the information, we provided the comparisons, and certainly it's the beginning of a much different sort of work than was included in the scope of the classification and compensation study, which was about paying or establishing the structure for what jobs are getting paid in the market.
Okay, that that does make sense. And this, you know, I don't mean this as a rhetorical question, but it may sound rhetorical, and you may not have this information. Even if we were to bump that, do that twenty-five thousand dollar increase to get to that new median, for example, how many employees could afford to live here and work?
And just point of clarification, the eight employees and the twenty-five thousand dollars, that's just to get those individuals a minimum of the pay.
No, I know. No, that that's, and maybe I'm looking to Scott for that. Just to, just as, it's something that I think we need to consider. You know, we have people that dedicate their professional life here. And that that's a, that's a key point for me is if you work here, it'd be great if you could live here, too. So that, that that's the other side of this coin.
Yeah, appreciate that, Councilmember Howe. And I think in some measure, that gets back to a little bit about what Councilmember Stewart was discussing, which is what's the, you know, what is the purpose maybe of going slightly above the mid? And that is one of the reasons in particular is that we are a an expensive place to try to live and recognizing that not everybody, many employees, can't afford to live here. So in order to be competitive, how are we gonna, how are we gonna get to that point?
Right, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Just to kind of a follow-up to Councilmember Stewart's question about the midpoint being slightly higher and then what the city manager just said. So we're comparing our city to a list of the other cities that you just showed us. So Auburn, for example, their cost of living, I imagine, is much lower. Or I don't know, much lower, but it is lower. So will their their range be the similar to our range? The minimums and the maximums, because if we're looking at other cities and how they're how they're putting, slotting in these grades, are their grades just like at a different level than ours and across the board? I'm just trying to figure out how other cities are doing it and how how we ended, how we're comparing it to these other cities to come up with our minimums and maximums.
So I can tell you that the methodology by which pay structure development is done is is very consistent in terms of the techniques. Now, personally, we've had the opportunity to work with Mercer Island, so we understand their pay structure and how it was developed very, very well. And some of the other organizations that are on this list were also included in that survey. So we had the opportunity to learn how their structures are developed and how they are maintained. They're actually maintained pretty consistently with the way that the city of Sammamish does, where there's generally a cost of living adjustment each year, where the the structure itself moves or increases. And then for those with steps and or pay administration that dictates a certain percentage based on performance, then individuals would move within the range to the next highest step in a given year if they're not at the maximum of the range. The one or two of these others recently, and maybe I would say three of these on the list, within the last two years, have also gone out to bid to get consultants to do this exact same work for them. So in terms of pay structure development, again, the techniques that we use are very common and very standard, where you align jobs internally. You then look at labor market data and establish key benchmark positions and then use that to establish an overall range. Part of your question was also about did we notice any consistency where Auburn, for example, which may have a lower cost of living, does that then translate to their cost of labor? And those are really two different key pieces. You know, cost of living, of course, is is based on rent and gas and healthcare costs and the price of milk and often is correlated, or people think about that in terms of inflation. But cost of labor and what organizations do to establish how much they're willing to pay for a job has more to do with the availability of the skill set of individuals performing that work in their labor market. And so they are, they're not directly correlated. So if, in fact, Auburn had a lower cost of living to a significant percentage, lower than any of the other organizations, and we were to sort every single benchmark from high to low, Auburn would not necessarily come out at the bottom every single time. Because that's going to be based on their internal equity. So their internal value that they place on the skill set that they're trying to get from the labor market and the value of that job at the time they made the decision to recruit for that particular position.
So it sounds that, sounds like the midpoint, us being higher, has less to do with the cost of living here versus that we value the skill set at a slightly higher than midpoint.
It's a, it's a combination. They, as someone said, it's cost of living is in there. Cost of living is represented by what people are willing to pay, but it's not the only item. And in fact, there isn't an actual line item or labor in cost of living, so it's a balance. In this particular labor market, you've got to do everything that you can to put yourself in a better and most competitive position, knowing that it's an ever-changing market. So continuing to evaluate the labor market, continuing to adjust the entire structure over time, and then also investing, obviously, in in people's pay and having them move in the range as well. All of those elements are very important.
All right, thank you.
All right, council, are there any other questions? Great. Well, thank you so much, Katie and Mark. Looking forward to seeing all the things that come after this.
Thank you very much. You all enjoy the rest of your meeting. Mark, I will see you tomorrow at the all-city staff meeting. Bye, Scott.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
All righty, next up, we do have a public hearing. I believe Audrey should be coming on, and this is for ordinance twenty-two-three-five-five, amending stormwater code and some service water development charges, changes, and charges.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. For the record, I am Audrey Starcy, Public Works Director. We are here this evening to ask, to seek the adoption of our Water Quality Enforcement Code updates, both in SDC twenty-one oh-three oh-five oh, as well as a new code section, SMC twenty-three one-hundred-zero-three-zero, as provided in your packet. This is an effort that we are very excited to present to you this evening. Our stormwater team has been working with our consultants, HBL, for almost a year for this effort. And we will likely begin the evening with a presentation, then ask that you open and close the public hearing this evening. And if you feel comfortable to adopt the proposed code amendments, we have a motion for you as well. Presenting this evening is Wayne Carlson and Helen Stanton from HBL. Both Stephanie Sullivan, the City Senior Stormwater Program Manager, as well as Lisa Weir, Stormwater Engineering Technician, and myself are also available for questions. And whenever you are ready, Wayne and Helen, thank you.
Great, thank you. And it's our our pleasure to be back before you again. We briefed you, I believe, in May about the the progress on this and since then have been before the the planning commission and got their recommendations as well. Next slide, please. So this evening, we have a very quick presentation, but we'll begin, we'll be talking about just the purpose of the project, the methodology by which we used to come up with the recommendations that are before you. We'll then discuss the the recommended amendments. We have example scenarios in your packet. We're not going to go through those unless you have questions on those, but we certainly have those as as part of the package. Helen will also kind of mention just some of the the other minor amendments that are part of this package related to the fee structure. And then obviously, next steps for the for the public hearing. So the the project purpose was several-fold, but it was to update and clarify the stormwater enforcement sections of the Sammamish Development Code. Also, to to gain compliance for maintenance of privately-owned facilities, construction practices, and equipment, provide consistent, fair, and defensible enforcement methods, and create a structured enforcement financial penalty system. And the reason we do this is because as a permittee under the Clean Water Act and and the the Phase Two NPDES permit that ecology issues, we have to have enforcement in in a progressive financial penalty system as part of the permit. Next slide. So with respect to methodology, as as we noted, I think in an earlier briefing to you, we conducted a thorough review of Sammamish's stormwater code, SDC twenty-one oh-three oh-fifty, and then also discussed key items with city staff. We also reviewed the stormwater enforcement chapters for six nearby cities as well as King County. And those are also permittees under under the permit that those cities are, and King County has, is covered under another permit, but the the requirements are very, very similar. Next slide. So with respect to chronology, again, on March twenty-first, we were at a study session before you back in twenty-two-three, March twenty-first. On June first, we did a study session with the planning commission. June fifteenth, we held a public hearing. Between July third and July seventeenth was the SEPA comment period for the the threshold determination. There were no comments filed during that. And then this evening is the 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 public hearing on the amendment package. So just as a a quick kind of summary or reminder of what is currently in the code now, and and the bold text is an emphasis that we added just to kind of draw your attention to it. But twenty-one oh-three oh-fifty F four deals with enforcement. And currently, it says that the director, or Audrey, shall initially rely on education and information assistance as much as possible to gain compliance with this chapter unless the director determines a violation is a result of a flagrant act. And so then if not, she can go straight to to the penalties. Twenty-one oh-three oh-fifty F seven, the civil penalties, is where it becomes a little murkier in terms of providing guidance for Audrey and her staff. And that is that Section B says, "Any person that's in violation of this chapter shall be subject to civil penalties assessed as follows: An amount reasonably determined by the director to be equivalent to the economic benefit the violator derives from the violation." So as you can see here, and and what we talked about in March, that's a a very, very kind of cumbersome process with not a lot of direction as to the 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 economic benefit that a violator would have for, you know, essentially violating the code. In an amount, in in Section Two of that, says in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand that is reasonably based on the nature and gravity of the violation. So you can see here, there's a lot of in here that's not all that predictable and doesn't provide a lot of guidance to city staff, which means that that the penalties, you know, are potentially rot for appeal. Next slide. So what we did in terms of analyzing other codes is we wanted to see, you know, what are other nearby permittees doing with respect to how they assess fines, and what kind of guidance do they provide staff? So you know, for the civil penalty, certain certain communities, Sammamish, as I, as I just mentioned, as well as Redmond, will provide fines that are given at the discretion of the director and or the code enforcement officer. So again, that 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 discretion doesn't necessarily have a lot of guardrails or guidance associated with it. There are some communities that provide a a flat penalty rate per day per violation, Issaquah, Mercer Island Shoreline, and Woodinville. And then still a third approach and the one that that staff and and in in the the planning commission also seem to like was a point-based rating system to determine the the financial penalty, where a series of questions are posed and evaluated and and based on the points that accrue as as part of that evaluation, a penalty is then assessed. Next slide. So
Oh, sorry.
Helen, yeah, yeah.
So moving forward, I recommendation for the city is to create a more predictable, objective, and defensible enforcement code to continue on with the use of progressive enforcement for stormwater violations, to implement a points-based system similar to Kirkland and King County, as we saw on the slide before, and also the removal of criminal penalties for stormwater violations. So just going over a couple of the key proposed changes and a full copy So just going over a couple of the key proposed changes and a full copy of all of the proposed changes can be found in the draft code amendments in tonight's packet. But one of the sort of main, or sort of underlying key changes of these amendments was the creation of a points-based penalty assessment and associated penalty fine matrix. So in the proposed amendments, you'll see that there are six penalty matrix criteria questions with point values assigned. And if we can look at the first example here, the question being, "Did the violation result in a public health risk?" And depending on the response to that question, either zero, one or two points is allocated. Yeah, based on the response. So looking at all of the penalty matrix questions, we had sort of questions on the public health risk, whether the violation resulted in environmental damage, if there was discharge into the municipal storm system. Looking, was the responsible party unresponsive in correcting the violation? Whether the violation was intentional and was the violation a result of the responsible party's failure to properly operate, maintain or implement a required plan? So as you'll see in the packet, all of these questions had three possible responses, giving zero, one or two points. Following on from sort of the main changes there, we did have a couple of additional minor amendments. The first one was for the non-compliance fines, and those have been changed to provide a flat rate fine as opposed to a range. So you can see, it's, for example, in the first one of one to 15 days, initially read as 100 to $250. We've changed that to $250 just to make it more defensible as opposed to a range. And then lastly, the surface water development charge. We've relocated this to include in the city's fee schedule as opposed to in the development code. So just a wee recap, staff is proposing to update the city's enforcement sections of the Samamish Development Code with the purpose to provide consistent fear and defensible enforcement methods, to remove the criminal penalties and relocate and revise the civil penalties into Title 23, to introduce a points-based penalty assessment matrix, and then the associated penalty fines. And then those last minor amendments that we talked about with the update to the non-compliance fines and the surface water development charges being moved to the city's fee schedule.
And my only point of just addition there is just that those non-compliance fines are for other code violations, not the stormwater code. The stormwater fees are part of this matrix where it's correlated with the points, as you saw in your packet.
So following the public comments in public hearing this evening, the city council may take one of the following three actions. First, to move to adopt the Water Quality Enforcement Code amendments to SDC 2103050 and the addition to S M 3, S M C 2310030. Second, to modify and move to adopt the Water Quality Enforcement Code amendments to the political section of SDC in addition to S M C. And then lastly, not to adopt the proposed amendments to the SDC and the S M C. So that concludes our brief presentation. As you would have seen, there's a lot more detail and a complete copy of the proposed amendments in the packet, but we'd like to turn it over to the city council for public comment and deliberation. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell, do you have a question?
Well, I just wanted to thank everyone for the presentation. I did go back and watch the planning commission meeting on June 15. I thought that was really informative and presentation was great. I really liked the new point system that you've put in place and kind of used Kirkland as that benchmark and that kind of leader in this field of making it a little bit more transparent and reliable system as to how we issue fines and how we go after infringements on the code. So I really liked that very much. And I liked the increase in the fees that were brought up too. I also love that phrase, "Only rain down the drain." I think that's great. And I, and I know we have those little plates that are on our drains throughout the city. I think sometimes they get removed due to snow removal and that type of thing. It'd be nice to see a little bit more of those throughout the city. And it came up at planning commission, and I just wanted to bring it up again, about education of the public and how to really take in that it is only rain down the drain. I wonder, and I, we may have already done it, but I wonder if we could take a pager, so in our newsletter at some point, and help our residents redirect them to all the information that's on our great website and talk about how, and educate them on, "Only rain down the drain," what to do if there is a spill on their street of, and as Mary Victor had said, you know, a rainbow on the ground is not good, rainbow in the sky is good, but rainbow on the ground is not, and what to do if such a thing were to happen. I think we really could maybe do a better job of educating our public. So maybe it's an item for our newsletter down the road. I think some public outreach like that would be really good. So thank you so much, everyone. I thought it was a great presentation and I like everything you had to say. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. So I'm not seeing any other hands initially, but I think we will open this public hearing. So public hearing for ordinance 0 or oh, 2023-555 is now open. So first up, we will do public comment.
There's nobody currently signed up.
Okay. But we'll see online maybe. Thank you.
If you wish to provide public hearing comments, please raise your hand. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. There are no hands raised. Back to you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. And I think we did get a few in our email, so that will probably be, be attached. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. I have a quick question. Just, so one, I agree, I like the point system. I like the clarity and the transparency a lot. And I know you talked a little bit about scenarios. So taking out, since we've taken out the verbiage that says like, if somebody did it because it was cheaper for them to dump versus doing the right thing, do we believe that this fee structure will be, that the upper end of it is high enough that we will prevent that kind of economic calculation by anyone? So where we've had scenarios in the past, right, where people either on purpose or not have, you know, allowed spillages or dumping to happen, are we sure that these fee structures are? Again, I don't want to overly penalize people when it's small and minor and it gets corrected quickly. But for those who might be doing it because it's cheaper to pollute than do the right thing, I, I want to make sure that doesn't happen.
Excuse me. City clerk here. Could we close the public hearing first?
Yes, sorry. Yeah. All right. So with that, we will close the public hearing for ordinance 02023-555. Okay. Sorry about that. Please continue.
Thank you. And I'm more than happy to start and please, team, add on to my response as needed. I think that the, the beauty of this system is that it allows for a wide range. So for those smaller first-time polluters, if you will, the, the fee, and depending on how the scoring works out, but has a potential to be fairly small, but yet impactful. It also has, with the scoring opportunity, especially with repeat offenders, has that opportunity to be quite high. Actually, that would, I think, quite, it, it would definitely do its purpose from what we have seen, both in the city and I think regionally, our storm team works with many other cities. And this is very similar to what other cities that have utilized a similar matrix are seeing too. For those bigger spills, there are also other agencies that are often looped in, like Department of Ecology, that have quite hefty fines as well.
Excellent. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I just had a question on the people that are offending. Are they typically residents? Are they business? And how, how are they caught?
I would say they are, the majority of our violators are definitely our commercial, like heavy equipment operators and then residents that maybe just aren't using the best management practices at home for simple things like power washing, painting. And then some of our violators are mobile businesses. They seem to be heavy violators or more predominantly happening. But, and then typically they're just caught from neighbors telling on neighbors. Really, our My Samamish app is, is how most people report it. We either get a phone call into the front desk or they utilize the application on their cell phone to let us know.
Great. Thank you for your work.
All right, counsel. So next up, do we need to approve these separately? Or can we approve one ordinance if someone wishes? Or maybe you can put the motions back up.
I'm just gonna, if we can please show the slide again. Thank you.
Great. I was also curious how the dry cleaners in the city are doing. I know they've been, that's always been like a longstanding thing.
Dry cleaners have done good.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
All right, counsel. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. I move to adopt the Water Quality Enforcement Code amendments to SDC 21.03.050 and the addition to S M C 23.100.030 as presented by staff and as described in Exhibit 1.
A second.
All right, moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And Councilmember Trine, did you want to do that next one? Oh, I saw your hand up. Okay, yeah. Do you want to make the motion for the second? Oh, you did both. Sorry. Yeah, I'm just not listening. Great. Thanks. All right. Thanks, Audrey. Thanks, Wayne and Helen.
Thank you very much, counsel. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, so moving to unfinished business, we have a presentation on the City of Samamish Economic Profile and SWOT analysis for 2024 comprehensive plan update. So I do see Kelly and David.
Well, good evening, city council. For the record, my name is Kelly Hildy. I am the Deputy Director of Community Development. Joining me is Jeff Arango with Framework and Evan Fisher, our Senior Management Analyst. Tonight, we will, we will be presenting the city's economic profile and the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis, also known as the SWOT, being done in support of the economic development element of the 2024 comprehensive plan update. So with that, Jeff, I will hand it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Kelly. Good evening, councilmembers and Samamish community. Jeff Arango with Framework, and I am going to pull up my presentation here. One second. While I'm doing that, Evan, could you have Annie promoted as a panelist again, please? Is everyone seeing my screen?
Yes, all good.
Okay, great. I also want to introduce one of my colleagues who's joining me this evening, Annie Seager from Seager Consulting. And she is on the comprehensive plan team to help support the economic development element for the city. And she, she has a strong background in municipal finance and economic development. So Annie, do you want to say hi?
Hi, thanks, everyone. Look forward to the presentation.
Great. Okay, so let's get into it. Starting with our meeting objectives. First, we want to preview the draft economic development profile. Second, we want to review an initial SWOT analysis that comes out of our analysis of the economic development profile. And then finally, and perhaps most importantly, we want to provide opportunities for input from the city council direction of the economic element. And so we have a kind of workshop exercise that we'll do following the presentation. Any questions to get your input on the SWOT analysis, which addresses strengths, uses opportunities and threats relative to economic development? So this is, will be the first economic development element. It is a required element under the Growth Management Act. However, it's not been funded by the state. Therefore, cities are not prepared to do it until that funding is available. This is authorized under the R C W 670A 070 of G M A, which talks about economic development element, establishing local goals, policies, objectives and provisions for economic growth and vitality and a high quality of life. And then the Washington Administrative Code provides more details on what's required. First is the summary of the local economy, which is the purpose of the economic profile. Second, identify strengths and weaknesses. We're also going to identify opportunities and threats and anything else we think is important. And then finally, which will go into the element, is the identification of policies, programs and projects for economic growth and development and to address future needs. So just wanted to start with a brief kind of overview of economic development. It can mean many different things to many different people. And I think, you know, most often people think of jobs and things like the tax base and city finances, but it's also things like, things like placemaking, arts and cultural events, something we've heard the community would like to see more. The education of our community, which is strong in Samamish, housing affordability. Businesses locate here if their employees can't be here, how do, how do people commute to the city, so on and so forth. The zoning code and the development code kind of set the parameters for where commercial economic generating activities can occur. And so the cities, you know, land base for that is an important consideration. Things like commuting patterns, transportation and structure are all part of it. And there's, of course, other factors not listed here. Just wanted to highlight that economic development can really be tailored to the local community. It just has to be one thing across the board. So we'd like to start with some background on what we've heard. And this is from a focus group that we held on economic development. We did some live polling. And this was the first question we asked is just kind of an icebreaker. So just thought I'd throw it out here and see if anyone wants to sort of make a, make a guess in their mind. But here are the answers. We gave them options from 2,000 up to 2,000. And 25% got the right answer, which is roughly 1,000, you know, depending on the data source. And, you know, the response was somewhat split. So this indicates, you know, that the data will be important for, I think, informing the discussion of the community. Next, we asked the attendees to rate current economic development opportunities. And Samamish was a rating from one to five. This is a sample size of eight. The responses to each question are there in the upper right-hand corner. The score was 1.6, so relatively low. We also asked what they see as the biggest economic development challenges. And these were some of the responses. Roads not supporting the current population, sprawling center, or city without a center is expensive, people move here for the schools and bedroom suburb, and then, you know, opportunities in the commercial areas. Back in November, we had a series of events called the Planning Summit. And one of them was focused on the mixed-use centers. And we asked attendees what they'd like to see in the use centers. And the responses, overall, you have different retail businesses with hardware store on top, follow-up fronts and local business. We also asked what they saw as the biggest challenge in the mixed centers. The most likely answers were not enough density, lack of character and traffic, followed by some of the other responses you see there. So at least at those, at that event, there seemed to be a strong desire, those that attended, to see some. So at least at those, at that event, there seemed to be a strong desire, those that attended, to see some changes in the centers, offering more housing opportunities and more variety of retail uses. The city has also conducted some outreach at the farmer's market, which has been pretty informative. And they asked questions of what they would like to see through a dot exercise. So attendees could dots, they could place the dots in the categories that they would most like to see. For entertainment, earlier, cultural festival, event, very popular, 45 responses, followed by arcades and indoor recreation. And then cinemas, performing arts, live music venues, and art galleries. For retail and professional services, strong desire for a bookstore, followed by garden, specialty stores, and a variety of other responses there below that. For dining options, the highest response casual restaurants, cafes, and coffee shops, followed by fine dining and food trucks. And then for grocery options, the strongest response was a farmer's market, followed by specialty store, and then very close, a cooperative grocery store and a neighborhood market. Neighborhood market, you know, again, would start as a land use issue since there really isn't, you know, space within neighborhoods for commercial uses. Lodging, something that is largely absent in Samamish. Strongest response was hotels, followed by breakfast and vacation rentals. And then in terms of artist space, artisan studios and animal services were the top responses, followed by incubator space and business support services, and then flexible office space, medical offices, and general office space was the lowest response. By then, the last question that was asked was, what are the things that you'd like to see that were presented in any of the categories previously presented? The top was a bakery, followed by a balance between the natural and built environment. Thrift store, aquatic center, and then a mix of uses. You can see there, some of them entertainment-based, some of them food-based, and some of them transportation. So now we'll get into a preview of the economic profile. It will be available publicly within the next few weeks. It's undergoing internal review, and we'll be making refined input from the City Council and the Planning Commission along the way before that's published. And that will live on the project website. So thus far, we've been up into six, let's see, five, six categories. There's a resident profile, which is essentially the resident city. We have two profilers, that's residents, their employment, whether that's in Samamish or outside of Samamish. And then workers specifically within the city of Samamish, whether they live here or commute from elsewhere. We looked at neighboring cities, so comparing Samamish's neighbor, those cities have similar qualities. Some are very different, like Bellevue and Redmond, that are kind of jobs' powerhouses. And peer cities is a selection of cities that we identified that we thought had some similar characteristics to Samamish that we might use as a benchmark for our economic development element. So now we'll just kind of briefly go through some of the findings. This is from the resident profile. You know, this is probably obvious to many, but Samamish residents are very highly educated, higher rates of undergrad and graduate degrees than King County as a whole. Many of the charts that we're using, the economic profile, either to King County as a whole or to peer or neighbor cities. So it's interesting to look at some of the comparisons, you know, understanding that, you know, we're not going to try to be Redmond or Bellevue, but there are some takeaways, I think, from some of the other examples. One thing that we set out that I think was not really apparent to me, Samamish really lacks 20 to 34-year-olds. Significant less people in that category than King County as a whole. So if you look at, for example, 25 to 34, it's only 8% of the community in Samamish versus 18.1% in King County as a whole. When you get up to over 45, between 45 and 54, that flips a little bit. There's a higher rate at 20% in Samamish than 13.2%. So it'd be interesting to unpack, you know, why that is. I mean, I think we could make a guess, you know, one, it might not, Samamish might not be what people are looking for in terms of lifestyle, you know, but that could be. It could be high housing costs, making it difficult to live here, but definitely something that stood out to us. Samamish has a really high proportion of children under 18, terms called child dependency rate, which is essentially children under 18. 47.3% compared to 30% in King County as a whole. So probably not a big surprise, but definitely a big gap between King County and the city. In terms of race and ethnicity, Samamish has a high proportion of Asian residents, 33.3% compared to 18.7% in King County. But lower portions of those identifying as two or more races, Hispanic or Latino and Black residents. And there's a similar proportion of white population in Samamish versus King County as well. So resident worker findings, these are the employment for people that live in Samamish. And one of the trends that's obviously taken off coming out of the pandemic is work from home. And about a quarter of Samamish's residents that are employed work from home. And those jobs are still associated with locations outside of Samamish largely. And that's definitely an opportunity, perhaps, to have those, at least some of those jobs associated with the city for things like counting towards our job target and so on and so forth. We'll talk about that later in a little more detail. But we kind of liken it to the issue with sales tax when, in the early days of online shopping. So it used to be that the sale was associated with where you were located, and now it's, you know, where it's made. King County has gained 350,000 jobs from 2002 to 2020. So we just wanted to highlight that, you know, while Samamish has a relatively small, you know, local economy in terms of jobs, we're part of a, you know, an economic region that is booming, that is growing, of which, you know, Samamish certainly takes advantage of for the resident workers. But there is an opportunity to perhaps capture more jobs in Samamish if that's a goal of the city. Another one, which I think we've talked about previously, but many employed residents do not work in the city. In 2020, only 755 workers in the city. You know, also live there. 57% of Samamish residents that are employed commute more than 30 minutes and most drive. So that's, I think, another thing that is important to note. Commuting patterns are important considerations of where people choose to live and where they work. 60% of employed residents commute alone, whilst 5.7% take transit and 6.9% carpool. Both of those were higher than I expected, you know, at close to 6% of transit ridership. And this graph, sorry, map on the left is from a resource called On the Map from the U.S. Census Bureau, and it shows inflow and out for workers. So 5,920 people commute into the city, 30,506 commute out of the city. And then this shows work from home based on the decennial census information. And you can see it starts at a low of less than 1,000, around 500. And now we're up to over 8,000 worker home jobs based on these estimates. And I think, you know, this is a dynamic that's going to continue to change, just continuing, continuing, I think, tension in some respects, you know, among work from home and in office for some companies. And, you know, we'll just have to see how that plays out. And then this shows where Samamish residents work. Again, this is from the On the Map tool, and this is a dot density map. So for those that are inclined, it's pretty easy to access the site and, you know, be able to look at this data in more detail, play around with it. We also have, you know, images of this in the economic profile, but these dots indicate where people are commuting to. And you can see some of those are quite far. But most people in Samamish, not most people, the highest employment center for residents of Samamish is Seattle at close to 10,000, followed by Redmond and then Bellevue. So kind of the three real jobs centers within the region. So Samamish worker findings, these are folks that work in Samamish, may, you know, a small portion live here, most commute outside. As of 2020, Samamish has 6,758 jobs in the city, so close to the 7,000 answer in the first quiz. According to the data here, the number of jobs slightly decreased from 73 to 80 in 2019 to 6,758. We did look at some of the categories that seem to be in the administrative support and waste management category, where there was a drop of jobs. 20% of people employed in Samamish work in that administrative support and waste management, followed by 14% in professional scientific and technical services. And the number of jobs in that category has grown steadily over the last decades, and in 2020 accounted for almost 1,000 jobs. Household findings, Samamish currently has a population, as of 2020, of 67,475 people with 21,854 households and a relatively large household size of just over 3. Just less than half of Samamish families have two income, have two income earners. And almost 50% have an annual income over 200,000, with the median income about 195,000. 795 or 7% of households fall below the federal poverty level. The rate of homeownership extremely high, 86.3%, 6.1% of low-income households are severely cost burdened. Half, almost half of renters are experiencing cost burden. And then our neighboring cities, Samamish has very few jobs compared to many of its neighboring cities. Bellevue and Redmond have over 100,000 jobs each. So they, Bellevue, I think, has 150,000 and Redmond about 100, even though Redmond's population is similar to Samamish. Samamish has roughly 7,000 jobs by comparison. Samamish also has the lowest job density of the neighboring cities where Samamish residents work. So there are cities with comparable numbers of jobs, but they have much less residential population. Another thing that we looked at, at the suggestion of Mary Victor, was to look at a metric called land value per acre. We have some graphics to show of that, but it's really an indicator of the fiscal sustainability of the city relative to providing services and infrastructure. Commercial land values in Samamish are lower in some of the neighboring cities, particularly in Bellevue and Redmond. No real surprise there, particularly in some of the more denser parts of, you know, those downtown areas. But I think the two takeaways from that analysis are that, you know, Samamish just has much less commercial land, and those commercial properties are less valuable or less productive economically, which has implications for city finances. Of the neighboring cities, and several of them also have high median incomes, Samamish is the highest by quite a bit. At 195,648, second highest was Snoqualmie at 171,000. And then looking at population growth comparisons, that we have charts that show them, and even accounting for, you know, the annexations, I'd say the population growth pretty sim, looks pretty similar across the different cities. With the exception of Bellevue has seen a little bit of an uptick, you know, likely because of some of the larger-scale developments that they're seeing in some of their former, you know, industrial areas like the Spring District and, of course, downtown as well. Okay, so this is the graphic I just referenced, which is looking at land value per acre. And this looks at land value based on both the value of the land, based on assessor's data from King County, and the value of improvements. And typically, cities will often look at the total value, assessed value of land and improvements, right? And so if you have, let's say, a large, big box store, the total value of that may be, you know, one of the highest in the community. But if you start to look at it on a per-acre basis, you start to see that those big box stores are not nearly as productive as smaller-scale, more urban development. When I mean smaller scale, I mean tighter sites and more vertical development. And so what this, the red indicates commercial properties, the green is residential. The green is not as spiky because it's not as valuable for obvious reasons. And also just want to really reiterate, these are not buildings, these are just extruded property values. And so what the red spiky areas indicate are very high land productivity, right? They're providing a fair amount of tax revenue relative to the amount of services that you would need to provide. And so when you look at these comparison communities, you want to look at, first of all, the amount of red, you know, how much red is there within the community? And you can see this is Issaquah, and this is Mercer Island, and this is, you know, Bellevue and Redmond. You can see that there's quite a big mass of red in that area, which includes some areas that are mixed-use as well. When you look at Samamish, you see mostly green, you don't see a lot of spikiness. So therefore, it indicates the commercial properties are not producing a lot of revenue for the city based on land area, but they're also not very highly productive from the land value per acre. So this graphic from a company called Urban3, and I want to make sure I attribute this to them, you know, kind of indicates the trade-offs for local communities, right? And if you want all three, you want stable services, you want low taxes, and you want low density. In a suburban and an urban environment, it's really not feasible. And so you have to look at ways to offset that. And, you know, your commercial properties and the land productivity is kind of the way to do it. Cheaper on infrastructure, more compact, easier to serve, so on and so forth. So there's more work to be done. And we are refining some of this analysis. There's some errors that we noticed in the King County assessor's data that we're refining, like for, this is a good one as an example, there's an open space parcel in Klahani that somehow identifies a commercial property and appears to have an inaccurate land value. So we're cleaning up a little bit, but I think largely the takeaways are, are as we, as we would expect based on, you know, land use and zoning patterns and development. We also looked at peer cities. We identified those upfront, and I think, you know, our big takeaway from the peer cities is that they are, they are quite similar in many ways. So looking at the number of jobs, and just to be clear, the peer cities we looked at were Samamish, well, obviously, Samamish, Newcastle, Normandy Park, University Place, and Mercer Island. And I think the, some of the characteristics that bind these communities together, they're, you know, largely residential, fairly affluent, well-educated, you know, sort of less kind of commercial areas and activity, so on and so forth. So you can see the number of jobs amongst the different communities. And Samamish here in the darker green, you know, has a similar amount of jobs as Mercer Island, but it has a much, much smaller population. You know, Newcastle and Normandy Park again have smaller populations, but do have also, you know, pretty low portions of jobs. So we felt like after analyzing the data that, you know, these were, you know, pretty good comparisons. And I think the purpose of this is to really talk about, you know, in the future, you know, what does Samamish aspire to be? You know, what sort of economic activity do we want compared to some of these other communities? Are there any lessons learned or things we could draw from them, whether those are good or bad, that could inform the direction of the element? In terms of job density, Samamish was close to the lowest. It was similar to Normandy Park. And then jobs per capita, which is jobs to housing units ratio, Samamish was the lowest at 10%. The highest was Mercer Island at close to 27%. Okay, so another part of the profile is to develop SWOT analysis and look at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And this is going to play out, play out over the next month or couple months. Where are we going to be getting input from the City Council and on Thursday from the Planning Commission and some of our focus groups? So everything I'm presenting here is preliminary, but we felt it was important to kind of document some of the findings that we saw from the data, the data-driven element part of the profile. So some of the strengths that we've identified, and we'll have opportunities for council input in a moment. Very, you know, the high median household income, you know, that's purchasing power. I think we're going to do some further analysis with data from the state that we haven't received yet that will help look at things like retail leakage and how much of those dollars are going outside of the community for goods and services. High educational attainment, you know, very educated community, you know, that's a real asset. High-quality schools, high quality of life, you know, people generally love living in Samamish for obvious reasons. We can't discount that as an important part of the economic development strategy. And then the fact that we're part of a really strong regional economy. I think some of the weaknesses, you know, limited commercial land for economic activity. So back to the map I just showed, you know, the amount of red area is really small. And so the, you know, the green areas have to do more of the heavy lifting in terms of funding services. The lack of transit service, which is well-known, that were relatively isolated from other communities due to topography and transportation connections. That's also, I think, an asset from kind of a livability standpoint. But, you know, it does make it difficult for Samamish maybe to become a destination for certain things, or, you know, people kind of traveling through or shopping while they're working in Samamish. You know, those things I think happen less than some of our neighboring communities. A weakness, I think, is, you know, it's a limited economic development planning today, but hopefully something that we can catch up with. You know, other cities that You know, other cities that have dedicated economic development staffs and, you know, multiple plans over multiple years. Uh, whereas we're just sort of starting out. The high housing costs and lack of housing options. Uh, challenges with competing with Redmond and Issaquah for those retail dollars. And then the large outflow of workers, uh, spending money outside the city. Opportunities, uh, first would be to associate those work from home jobs with Sammamish. And, you know, there might be other cities that are interested in looking into that. So perhaps there's a coalition. The town center, you know, has, I think, been primarily the city's economic development strategy to date. And there is build out, you know, that's going to continue to happen. So that's definitely an opportunity, um, being able to develop sub area plans for the mixed use centers, which is something. Uh, that we've talked about previously as part of a land use discussion. Um, establishing those new neighborhood centers as another mechanism to expand retail and other service opportunities within neighborhoods. Minimize transportation districts, uh, distances, more walkability, things like that. And then to plan for support amenities for work from home jobs. So, you know, twenty five percent of, of, uh, residents are working from home, you know, that's likely to increase or change the needed services throughout the day. Some of the threats and things we want to be mindful of declining school enrollment, I think is an issue, you know? I don't know if Sammamish has been impacted quite as bit as some of the other communities like Bellevue that have had to close schools, but, you know, certainly a concern. And the new lack of young workers able to afford to live in Sammamish. And that goes back to the, the demographic data about the lack of, you know, twenty to thirty four year olds. The broader tech industry layoffs and downturn could have an impact. Uh, the fiscal sustainability of the city is always important from an economic development, uh, perspective. And something I know the city is actively working on. Uh, potential for global economic downturn. And then finally, I think climate change, you know, has obviously a multitude of impacts. But one of those is, is on economic, uh, development opportunities. So that's again, our initial take and we expect this to change and we fully expect to, uh, be integrating input from, uh, variety of parts of the community. And then, uh, finally, um, just a couple more slides. Uh, just wanted to, uh, highlight again our, uh, growth target for jobs. Uh, with seven hundred and twenty eight. We do have capacity for that currently. There could be an opportunity to increase our job capacity within those mixed use centers, um, likely as part of that sub area planning effort. But it's a relatively modest total number of jobs, but it does, you know, represent a significant portion of our existing jobs or a significant ratio. And then, uh, just wanted to make a connection back to the land use. We've been working on the future land use map. This is just the existing future land use map with some new categories. And we'll talk about this more in the next presentation. But, you know, the future ladies map is another opportunity like with housing, you know, to be able to kind of. Uh, uh, future forward, um, our economic development strategy as well. So look forward to continuing that discussion as well. And with that, I'd be happy to turn it back to the mayor, answer any questions. And then we can go to our Miro board and take input on, uh, the SWOT, uh, exercise. So, thank you.
All right, council, maybe we can do questions and Miro boards if that is fair. Would anyone like to go first? I mean, questions or Miro board? Yeah, Councilmember Howe.
My question has to do with how we view, um, a, an asset or an opportunity. Cause I look at, for example, our city staff as an asset that enables us to do something. That perhaps other cities would struggle with. For example, if we were to create an event, a festival, a gala or whatever. I could see Angelie's team and others in this, in the staff, building something phenomenal that would actually attract. I'll just say international people who would want to come and partake. Cause I could see that being a thing. I look at what Issaquah does, I look what Redmond does, we just had Derby Days, Sammamish are coming up. There's, there's opport- I see opportunity there, but it's reliant on leveraging existing staff. And I don't know that's a fair thing to put onto a swap board. Because I, we don't control that necessarily. It would have to be an intention of the city to either do it with staff and or hire the experts. Who could pull something like that off. So I just wanted to kind of understand where, where would staff fall into something like this?
Well, I think, you know, uh, well, first I agree with you, you know, having worked in Sammamish on and off for five years. And I said this before, you do have an excellent staff, um, and I certainly don't have any issue with putting it on there as a strength. Um, and, and furthermore, I think there could be opportunities to perhaps add staff that are, you know, dedicated to economic development activities as well. So I think, you know, thinking about the city infrastructure and human resources is, is really important. And, uh, so I, I have no issue adding that. I think it could go on the strengths, uh, piece of the board.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thanks. Um, one thing I would love to understand a little bit more is how we do define jobs in Sammamish and how have we defined it historically? Cause I don't mind account, I mean, I think we need to account for the work from home, but I don't know that we've historically accounted for it. So I want to make sure if we start adding those things in that we can note, it's not like we just suddenly have more people working from home. And we do post pandemic, but. I feel like we have a lot more jobs than what we've accounted for always historically. And so I don't know how to bet more clearly say that, like, we, we definitely want to account for those working from home. But we have to be sure to note that we never counted people who were working from home pre pandemic. Um, so the, the total spike that we might see isn't just because it's post pandemic, it's because we never counted it before, right? And I think that's important distinction to understand, so we know kind of which direction we're heading. Um, so I'd love to understand that more. I'm not sure, and I'll have to look, but it felt like not all of your numbers kind of all added up. Like when we looked at some of the percentages of, like percentages of people working from home versus the number of people commuting. So I look forward to kind of getting the presentation and trying to sort through some of that, just to understand that consistency. Um, and I think you touched on this, you said you were going to do some more analysis on retail leakage. Cause one of the things I noted was if we have the highest median income by a long shot. Um, you know, what, what kind of, uh, per capita revenue should we be expecting from sales tax? Right? Uh, what do other communities have versus us? Because we have a, we have a really big opportunity there, right? I mean, people who have more money will likely spend more money, not all of it. We have more discretionary income, we may save more, but there is a huge opportunity there, I think. In terms of how do we capture, what are people spending money on? And are, are there huge opportunities there for us to keep more of that within the city of Sammamish versus externally? Um, I'm wondering if we're going to do a comparison sort of, uh, during the pandemic. Um, I think there, we got to see a picture, at least briefly, of what it would look like. Um, if most of our money was spent in Sammamish because a lot of people ordered everything online. And so all of that sales tax revenue was coming to Sammamish as opposed to going to other places. And I, I think we've seen a little bit of a decrease in that sales tax revenue as people have started to not shop for everything online and they've gone back outside. So I definitely think there are opportunities there. I definitely think in terms of the Miro board, um, there is an opportunity, um, for things like Councilmember Howe mentioned around. Um, events, uh, whether it be festivals or even events like the fourth on the plateau, right? We have, we have these huge events. Um, I don't think we capitalize on them in terms of the type of revenue we could bring in from those events. In terms of the types of concessions or retail opportunities that we create at those events. Um, I also know we have some, uh, opportunities potentially to alter our policies. Like I know when we were involved in Little League, we couldn't have like food trucks at the ball fields, right? There were no concessions. And as a parent who got to spend many, many hours at the ball field, it was frustrating that you couldn't buy, you know, a drink, a cold drink or a snack or things like that. So I think there are some opportunities for us and it'd be interesting to see what those might look like. If we could provide those types of opportunities at, at our existing or future events. So I'd like to see those types of opportunities there. And I definitely want to understand where some of that sales tax revenue opportunity would be. Cause I, I think that's a really big one. Um, you mentioned town center, but I would love to see the actual analysis of what. Uh, cause I think you're right, Jeff, that for many years, the assumption was the town center was our economic development plan. But I don't know that we've really seen that analysis of what that looks like, um, and where we need to be focused. Especially when you look at some of the, um, things that people are looking for. Um, in terms of, uh, maybe not general retail space, but specific types of retail space. And, uh, I think Scott and I just had a conversation this afternoon, like restaurants, right? I mean, what kinds of opportunities if we had actual sit down, you know, more, uh, sit down types of restaurants? We have a few, but we don't have many in the city. And what kinds of revenue opportunities there, um, are we missing out on? So I would love to see more of that. You also mentioned, Jeff, the analysis that's happening for the financial sustainability. Um, and I, I feel like these are, you know, there's a lot of overlap between this and what's going on there. And I want to make sure that all of that information is being shared bidirectionally, right? The, the fiscal sustainability, uh, information should understand what is our economic? What are our economic outlooks? What are things that are already in the pipeline? And then whatever we're finding out from that sustainability should feed back into this. So hopefully we're, our consultants are all talking. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you. Um, I was just curious and, uh, if you're doing outreach with the Chamber of Commerce, um, talking to them about our local business. Cause I would be curious to hear and if they have any data on it or if they intend to do any surveys of their members. When you have a small business in Sammamish, be it a small business that has an actual storefront, where it's very obvious you're a small business. Or you're working out of your home and some, small business that way. What is it like to do business in Sammamish? Is it easy? Is it difficult? Is there more, um, support that the city could give in terms of whatever that support may be? Whether we could start developing a business directory, uh, that would go out to the community? Um, what are small businesses in Sammamish looking from the cit- for the city for? Uh, that we, that we can provide? Um, is it, you know, so I'd be really interested in hearing their feedback about what it's like to have a small business in Sammamish. And what are the pros and cons and what could we be doing better to help support them?
Councilmember Howe.
I was going to start adding to your Miro board. On the threat side, I see, um, uh, the, it, it's how we communicate information. Like if we were to do an event, for example, there could be a population segment that's very much anti that. I don't want new people here, I don't want to bring in people from the outside. So I think, I see that as a threat. I do see, um, our, our current chamber is struggling like other chambers. I don't see it as a strength. I think that they need a lot of propping up. So I see that as a, as a weakness frankly, and needs, and need some support. In terms of, uh, the add on, like social retail is a huge, huge thing for, uh, building revenue. But you mentioned that with that missing, um, thirty to forty year old segment out. If it costs me the same to live in Ballard, I'm living in Ballard because they have social retail. And it's interesting, it's where my peers are. So I don't know that we're going to attract that. And I don't think even trying to come up with programs to attract that would be successful. However, um, women over forty five have huge disposable income opportunities. They are in charge of, um, the lion's share of the family's budget and control it. So they literally have the purse strings for that. So learning how to adapt to this segment of the population that we already have and could find better ways to cater to that, to that segment. Is going to be profitable over the long term and aid towards that sustainability of our, of our finances. So we spend money today, how do we do it now? What are we trending on and staying ahead of that curve?
Did I hear you say you wanted a nightclub?
You absolutely heard me say that.
Okay, that's what I thought. Debbie Mary Lamb?
So one of the things that I see as opportunity was you had mentioned that the commercial land value is lower here compared to our neighboring cities. And I don't know if that means we can just do a better job of marketing Sammamish as a place, um, that has that, that can offer that. Um, I do see a threat as, as, and I don't know how to put this, um, a divisive community. I mean, if we, if you look at a lot of the cities that have some of these newer commercial developments, like in Woodinville. And I was, um, talking not too long ago to the mayor of Woodinville about how they were able to, um, build a lot of the, the new retail spaces that they have. And there seems to be a huge amount of, of, um, community support. Not that there's not community support for the town center here, but there is a very vocal like group. That oftentimes creates, um, uh, an imbalance of, of the, the support that we actually have. And so I do see that as a continuing threat, um, to economic development here. Um, and for businesses, um, it, you showed that thirty percent of the people that live here are Asians. I do see a huge opportunity for, um, businesses that, retail businesses that appeal to, um, that particular population.
What is the yellow? Oh, is it divisive? Sorry, it's very small for us. Oh, that's so helpful. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Yeah, when is this coming back to us? You said, uh, this is like the initial kind of sweep at it and it'll be coming. Cause I'm thinking, I did really like especially that monopoly on the commercial spaces, I hear that often. Um, so I'm like super curious to kind of hear, you know, from our business owners or small business owners that wish they could have a storefront. Um, that kind of thing too. So when did you say it was coming back? Or maybe Jeff said, yeah.
Um, I don't know as we have a specific date, uh, that it's coming back. Um, so I'll refer to Evan or Kelly and then.
Yeah, good question. Um, uh, we are currently looking at the schedule and, and figuring out when makes most sense to come back in the fall, uh, to revisit economic development. I'd like to circle back to Councilmember O'Farrell's question, um, about working with the Chamber of Commerce. And we've been collabora- collaborating with them pretty closely. Um, we, we have, um, sent them a business survey that asks some of those questions that you had, um, indicated. And then we have also worked to set up a technical advisory group with them. Um, it's comprised of members of the chamber who can provide a bit more targeted feedback on our SWOT analysis, economic profile. And then also help us review kind of the first draft of, uh, economic development goals and policies.
Great, I mean, and just what I'm seeing from this is we have a lot more opportunities than anything else. So maybe that's a positive sign. We can't get worse, I guess, at this point. Um, but no, I think this is really great and I'm excited to see kind of where it goes. I wanted you to, but they seem to be moving fast, yes.
Your move. Apologies, I was sending that to Annie because she was asking me if, uh, she wanted, if I wanted her to speak about something.
Yeah, Annie, do it.
Yeah, I'll go for it.
Um, oh, it just, so Jeff mentioned earlier, and, and this came up with one of your comments about work from home. Um, this idea that, um, the way we think about employment will change the same way that we think about retail sales and taxes. Used to be, you know, ten plus years ago, that we had a point, uh, point of sale based sales tax system. And so the sales tax was collected based on where the sale was made. We now have a destination based sales tax system, which means that the tax is collected where this, the, um, final destination of the product is or where it's delivered. Um, and that obviously has huge implications for a community like Sammamish, particularly in times like the COVID nineteen pandemic. When people are, you know, making purchases directly to their home and being taxed at their home address. I personally think that, um, work from home employment is like that. You know, traditionally, we think of employment being, um, positioned where you work at your desk. Um, with work from home, that's really tricky because it, that's not how we think of work from home positions. We think of it based on kind of where your desk would be hypothetically if you, you know, worked in person. Um, or where your HR is, or, you know, where you, um, where the business is located. And so this is sort of a transition that we think will happen over time. And that has potential tax implications, especially when we think of things like business and occupation tax. Um, you know, right now, um, in Washington, you can impose a, um, headcount tax, uh, particularly on businesses, um, that have like. Um, their headquarters and in a particular city. Um, in the long term, as businesses have headquarters where folks are working remotely. Um, you know, will the communities who are bearing the, the burden of that employment occurring in their community be able to collect that head tax? You know, that is a question. Um, so I just, I think that is something that we want to think about is, um, that's potentially an opportunity for Sammamish, right? You know, I don't expect that, you know, the next Microsoft is going to headquarters in Sammamish and build the kind of campus. to headquarters in Sammamish and build the kind of campus that Microsoft has. Not because businesses won't locate in places like Sammamish, just because nobody is going to be thinking about building that kind of office space, and requiring commuting in that way in the future. That's not the way we are when we're forward-thinking. And so, you know, how is it an opportunity for Sammamish to think of their work-from-home workforce as an enhanced part of their workforce? And I just wanted to note, as part of that, that the employment data that we presented in the presentation is all traditional employment data that's based on kind of where you would work if you were in person. And so that 7,000 or so jobs in Sammamish number does not include folks that are working from home.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, so we have a huge challenge in the city that we don't have access to a highway. So I don't know if that, you had that on your other slide, but, you know, the one thing we don't have in common with any of the peers that you put on your list there, is there's no highway freeway going through our city, or even, we have no, we don't have access to it. So then, then the, the threat, I know, I'd call this a weakness, too, but then if we don't, it's addressing the choke points. Because it's about, if you want to have people produce opportunities to come to our city, you have to have it so that it's accessible and easy to get here. So we have major choke points. And so if we don't address those choke points, and take care of those, yeah, then, then we're, we're, it's tough, it's tougher. And then the only other thing I would have to, you have to give me a definition of what is a residential community. I, I thought we were a residential community. I believe we are a residential community. And even if we build the town center, the town center is just more residents living in a different type of community, which is residential, with commercial underneath it. But it then is still a residential community. So then, I'm back to my point, whereas then this would be exempt, and wouldn't even be necessary to be passing in 2024. So I think that's, if you want to see a threat, there's a threat. 2024, we don't actually have to do this, because we actually define what a residential community is. And we know that Sammamish is a residential community based on the information that we've been provided by the region, Vision 2050. And I can go on, there's, but that's for the next item. So we do have some opportunities, and definitely the quality of life, the positives that you stated at the beginning, Jeff, are exceptional for why people are here in Sammamish. And so, but it would be a waste of our time if I were to just repeat all those. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Howe?
This is a question. Can you share your Miro boards with us so that we can work on them independently? Maybe you can ask that later, but, I mean, I love doing Miro boards. I love SWOT analysis. I think they're fun. So you'll get more out of us, frankly, if we get an opportunity to just kind of noodle on these. You, I don't want to screw up what you've already got, so send me a clean one.
Assign us a color, each.
You could do that.
Okay, we'll do, we'll send it, we'll send it to.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just doing some really quick back-of-the-envelope math. I mean, Mercer Island collects almost three times as much sales tax per capita as we do. And they don't, you know, they're not, they're a residential community and everything. So I do see that as a huge opportunity for us, that we just need to figure out how we can capture more of that. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
Thank you. Can we go back and talk about the, the land use map?
I think that's the next.
Oh, is that the one I saw as part of this whole presentation?
Is land use the next one?
We will be talking about that as the next topic.
Okay, yeah, all right. But we still can. If you have like a specific question, unless Jeff's going to answer, you can ask it, and then we'll see what Jeff says.
Specific to the economic development component, sure.
We can talk about it in the next presentation.
Cool. Councilmember Stewart?
I'm sorry, another question. Well, it made me think of it. One of the things Deputy Mayor Lamb brought up was the, the value of our commercial space. But Jeff, if I understood the graph correctly, it wasn't so much how much the land was valued, it was more how much value did that land bring to the city? Is that correct?
Yeah, but it's, it's also the improvement value associated with it. And again, the most simple comparison, and there's lots of great stuff to read up on this online for those that are interested, is that when you have a smaller urban site that's multi, say, multi-story, that that, even, even a modest development is typically more productive than a big-box store or sprawling kind of commercial development. So it's, it's the amount of land is one thing, but it's also just, you know, your zoning and the scale of development. So I think as the town center gets developed, you might see some more spikes happening at those locations. But the premise of this analysis is that, you know, developments that may be on a wholesale scale, producing a fair amount of revenue, are actually not as productive as urban development, and require more services and expense to be able to have those developments in the community.
Right. And is it accurate to say that communities that have, even residential communities, but I would say, you know, we, we have pretty high standards in Sammamish in terms of the types of services we want. But even in residential communities, land that has that mixed use and areas that have more commercial use, those, that property actually can help to subsidize the property taxes for the residents, right? Because you can charge higher property tax for commercial and mixed-use space, correct?
Yeah. And in Washington, because, and Annie, please feel, feel free to chime in, in Washington, since generally, unless there's a vote of the constituents, the total amount of, of tax revenue is capped. And so if you have really productive commercial properties, they're paying a, a larger portion of that. So that's, that's really the premise. And so again, it's the small amount of commercial space relative to residential, and then the relative low productivity of the land compared to some, particularly some of the neighboring communities. And I would just add, like, a great kind of case study is like Redmond. It'd be interesting to kind of maybe, not saying that we could do this, but it would be interesting to look at, say, Redmond 20 years ago, and their downtown versus now, and see the change in the productivity. Now, there may be reasons why, you know, some people, you know, are not a fan of what's happened in downtown Redmond. But I think as an economic strategy, you know, it's likely paying dividends for them.
Well, and it's also about scale, right? Just because we look at other cities doesn't mean we're trying to become them. We can scale it appropriately for Sammamish, but still get a huge increase in value and revenue.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely.
All righty, Jeff. So I'm not seeing any other hands. I don't know if you have a closing to this, but I thought about a five-to-six-minute break for us. It's been about two hours to switch over. So I don't know if you have anything in closing?
No, just to say thank you for the input. Really appreciate it. We'll clean up the Miro board, and we'll send it out. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to reach out in terms of how to, you know, use the Miro board or whatever. It's pretty simple. And just appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Annie.
I do have, have one.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to add a couple of things here. So, so just as a roundup, this is a, this effort here is something that's, that's grant-funded through the Port of Seattle. So it's helping us with this work. We're not required to do an economic development element for our comprehensive plan. We've been directed by the council to take that on. And this is something that we as staff see as really important, because we, we deal with the citizens on a regular basis, people who own businesses. And, and there's a lot of opportunity in this community to culture businesses, to grow businesses, and to keep them in the city. Many times, we, we deal with code enforcement cases, such as Big Block Brewing, which used to be operated in someone's garage years ago, and was the subject of an ongoing code compliance case. And in order to keep that business, we, we worked with them to find appropriate location for them to move to. So that's a good example. Others are commercial kitchens that we have in people's homes, daycares. These are all things that we see grow, and sometimes leave the community, because we don't have that next stepping stone for them to move into, once they've outgrown their home business. So it is something that we've heard over the years is really important to community members. So we look forward to having this further conversation on this. It's a fairly deep topic, and we look forward to taking it on. So thank you.
Great, that sounds good. So let's take a break until 8:42, and then we'll come back with the update on land use. Thank you. All right, welcome back. So we are on to item number 15, a presentation on the update on the approach for land use and housing alternatives for 2024 comp plan. David Pyle?
Thank you, Mayor. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. Tonight, we have with us again Jeff Arango, and I believe he'll be joining us, and will be promoted again. We also have Evan Fisher, Senior Management Analyst, and Kelly Hilli, our Deputy Director here. We will be providing an update on the status of the city's work for, excuse me, related to land use and housing for the comprehensive plan. Land use and housing are the most pivotal topics, the most important topics, as the foundation to the comprehensive plan. Once we have our, our path set, we are then able to start building out the balance of the analysis that goes into the comp plan. So you've heard from us on this topic. However, it is an evolving landscape. We have seen legislation pass. We've been working with our partners, and with the county, and with the state, and with PSRC to get a better understanding around what their expectations are, and how some of the recent legislation plays into our comp plan update. We've also been working to get a better understanding of past legislation related to housing supply, and how our, our, primarily our, our existing capacity, our growth target, our housing allocation, and our future supply, all meshed together to provide the basis for our comp plan. And I see Jeff has joined us, and I'll turn it over to him, I believe. He has a short presentation, and then we'll open it up to conversation with the council. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, David. Great introduction. And everyone should be able to see my presentation now?
We can see it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, so meeting objectives. As David said, we want to convey the guidance that we've gotten from PSRC about planning for the growth target and affordable housing allocation. We want to talk a little bit more about the future land use map, and its ability to be a tool to help build capacity for local housing needs. And we want to receive some further guidance on whether to plan for the 75,000 population threshold under HB 1110, which requires a minimum of four units per lot, as opposed to two if you're under that threshold. Just a quick refresher on this. This is showing kind of the life cycle of the comprehensive plan. Stage one is the brief period we have to put the plan together. And then we're going to have implementation, monitoring, and refinement. So I know there's going to be some questions, which, of course, we have ourselves, around, you know, how realistic our growth target and affordable housing allocation is in terms of actual development patterns, and what do we do if it doesn't play out that way? So we'll address that. But that's essentially what this diagram would indicate, is the ability to do that. And there are some specific measures under GMA, which I'll talk about in a moment. So again, just really quickly, the land use terms, the growth target, this is what comes from King County. That's the 2,100 units. Affordable housing allocation, new this year, comes from the county, and it's a breakdown of those 2,100 units by income level. All 2,100 units are 80% or below immediate income. The population projection, which the Growth Management Act requires a consistent population projection throughout your plan, so you can base things like capital facilities plans, and parks level service on that population projection. And that's largely comes from the growth target, you know, by the household size. And then the development capacity is the amount of land that could theoretically be developed. So it accounts for properties that are vacant or underutilized. And that creates the development capacity that could theoretically occur over time in the city. So this is one of the FAQs from King County about planning for the growth targets. And we previewed this at our last meeting with the City Council, but we hadn't had the meeting with PSRC yet. And the response basically says that jurisdictions can plan for more capacity, meaning you can have more theoretical development capacity in your, in your land use plan than you need to accommodate the growth target, but you can't base your plan on more growth than the target. So what that means is, for example, when you go to do your capital facilities plan, and you set impact fees, you're going to assume the amount of growth that is consistent with the growth target. And the follow-up, I think, really pretty clear guidance that we got from them, is that we risk not having our plan certified if we plan for more growth than is in the growth target or the affordable housing allocation. We can plan for more capacity, and that's, we do that through the land use, future land use map, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. So this goes back to the question of what do we do if development doesn't play out consistent with the growth targets and the affordable housing allocation. And there is a provision under GMA called reasonable measures. The top statements from MRSC, the Municipal Research Services Center, and it talks about this, the Buildable Lands Program, and the larger counties have to do buildable lands, which includes King County. And there's a process, as part of that, to identify where there's maybe a mismatch around the assumptions for growth and what's actually happened. So, you know, in, in your buildable lands, if you're assuming that property's going to be developed at, say, four units an acre, but they're really only being developed at one unit an acre, that is a mismatch. And cities or counties would then have to go and do reasonable measures to reduce barriers between what was expected and what actually occurred. And there's some examples that are linked down in the, below. I worked on the Kitsap County Comprehensive Plan Update in 2016, and there was a reasonable measures effort as part of that. I didn't work directly on it, but there's an example there, and a lot of resources on their page. And then one also from Snohomish County. And so reasonable measures, other than addressing your urban growth area, which wouldn't be applicable for us, would be things to, again, remove barriers. It could be reductions in fees, changes to zoning, changes to development standards, so on and so forth. Okay, now we'll get into some of the similar information that we presented last time, but we've updated it based on the guidance from PSRC. So the last few meetings, we've been discussing, you know, opportunities for local housing needs, and whether we could plan for more growth in the growth target. And we definitively got the answer from PSRC, which was no. But we still have the opportunity to account for local housing needs in our future land use map. And we just want to explain how that would work. So the top is number one, that's the growth target and the affordable housing allocation, the 2,100 units. That is the basis of what we're going to plan for, based on the guidance. Population projection comes out of that, and then that feeds into all of our elements. So transportation element, utilities, capital facilities, everything we need to accommodate the growth we're expecting, needs to be based on the 2,100 units. For local housing needs and opportunities, we can build in future capacity into the future land use map. Some of that will naturally happen, because we have to implement new legislation like HB 1110, and, and other, you know, changes we might decide on locally. Those go into the future land use map. Those could also feed into future subarea planning efforts. So I think we backed off some of the potential increases to densities in the centers, and would instead recommend that those be addressed as part of, hopefully, a near-term subarea planning effort that can really engage the community more, and really dive into the details of what those centers really want to be in the future, and plan properly for them. So I think that is a bit of an upside, is that we can be a little bit less aggressive in terms of the amount of changes we have to make to accommodate our growth target and affordable housing needs. So this is showing the path for number one. Again, we got these numbers from King County, and, and from ultimately, I guess, first is what we've been instructed by PSRC to plan for. In terms of local housing needs and opportunities, again, this is the analysis we presented last time. We also provided another memo or brief paper summarizing some of the methodologies and some of the data that was used. We looked at housing affordability by income band, workforce housing needs, and housing unit, and household size mismatches. Rather than move these into, you know, the actual growth target, Rather than move these into, you know, the actual growth target, these would have to be addressed in the future land use map. Again, through our analysis and some assumptions we made in terms of how much of a given gap to, you know, add to what we're, what we're trying to address in terms of local needs. We came up with the number of five thousand five hundred and seventy-five. Be happy to answer any more questions about that. In terms of the population projection, we take the twenty-one hundred units. We do the average household size that was used by King County in the Buildable Lands Analysis, and we get to five thousand seven hundred and seventy-five increase in people. When we put that into a linear population projection, we go from sixty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty up to seventy-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five. So again, based on the assumptions in the plan, we'd be just below the seventy-five thousand threshold, but, you know, development may play out differently than anticipated. So just to reiterate, these are the targets and growth affordable housing allocations we'll be working with. Some of these need to be provided in certain types of housing, so we need to be mindful of that. It's not just the total number of units, but also the types of units that we can accommodate. And in the zero to fifty percent, it's generally mid-rise housing or perhaps multiplexes. So again, we need to show allocation in certain types of units unless we can demonstrate otherwise. Based on the levels of affordability, one thousand eight hundred and eighty, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six units would need to be provided at mid-rise. Those would be primarily as in the centers and the bonus parcels. The capacity we're showing in the centers is based on the existing zoning capacity. And then that could be increased through the subarea planning process. And we could look at things like inclusionary zoning or some form of that. I don't think a traditional inclusionary zoning program is going to produce zero to fifty percent AMI units. So we have presented sort of an alternative strategy that we think might work, and that's something we could explore as part of the subarea planning process. And then the bonus parcels don't require, you know, market rate units to make happen. They can be entirely affordable. They could be done through partnerships with affordable housing providers. I mean, the big, the biggest barrier to making the affordable units happen is the land, you know, by and large. And a lot of our mid-rise capacity, you know, is in the centers where they're owned by commercial property owners that, you know, likely have other interests for their property. But I think there is some creative solutions we might be able to look at through zoning to leverage some opportunities for affordable housing. So based on this, we do have the capacity needed to meet the targets and the allocation. So that's good, and we have a lot of opportunity through subarea planning to increase that. So this shows our growth target, what we estimated as the local need and opportunity, the proposed capacity, and then potential for increase through subarea planning. And I, I guess I would just also like to reiterate that, you know, some of the challenge in terms of being limited for how much growth we can plan is, you know, the city advocating previously for, you know, a different category of city and advocating for a lower growth target. And that's, you know, limited our ability. If that, you know, desire by the city has changed and we wish to express a desire to take on more growth in the future or even, you know, whatever the categories are for King County under Growth Management Act, that's something we could look at in the comprehensive plan, you know. But right now, we have to deal with the twenty-one hundred target and, you know, the cities and towns category that Samamish is currently in. And then this is the same chart we showed in the last presentation, just showing our jobs target. We have the capacity to meet it and, you know, per the economic development conversation, we have opportunities to expand the job capacity if we so choose. And then just wanted to give a quick reminder on HB eleven-ten and sort of, you know, what we're sort of planning for from a population perspective. We do have a requirement to provide two units per lot and provide the six of nine housing types. If we decided to sort of pre-plan for the seventy-five thousand, which would have a little, you know, some efficiencies from a code perspective, because we would do it once. You know, we would be looking for direction on that. And in that case, we would have to provide four units per lot and six if two are affordable. These are the six or the nine missing middle housing types, just refresher. And I think there was agreement among the council and the Planning Commission to kind of choose the first six, starting at duplex. And then finally, just wanted to talk about the future land use map. These are the categories that we've come up with for the draft, what's called the Flume. Town center, mixed use center, the neighborhood center, which could expand over time. Two categories of residential, urban residential, which is typically the areas around the centers. And then the neighborhood residential, which cover the R zones. Parks and open space, forested lands, public and institutional. We've added a few other features to the map that aren't necessarily land use categories, but are important things to note and things we've heard from the community. So this first version was just us kind of taking the existing map, the existing pattern, and just applying the new categories. It looks relatively similar, a little bit different color coding and some different names. But this new version includes all the categories that I described. It includes the prospect of maybe thinking holistically about the town center in Inglewood, given their close proximity and ability to kind of amplify that area. We've included the wildland urban interface, which is referred to as WUI, and it's an identification of potential wildfire, wildfire risk. Again, it's something that's mentioned in recent state legislation. It's not necessarily something that would limit development, I believe, per state law, but it could look at things like mitigations, building code issues and things to minimize wildfire risk. We've also added what we're calling wildlife bridges. This is a data source that came from King County and it's shown here in the orange dotted line. It shows migratory patterns for wildlife. And then the bridges are areas that connect between critical areas to kind of connect habitat. And then we've also identified wetlands and bogs and stream corridors. And in the land use element, we'll have a full or perhaps multiple versions of the critical areas map. So just wanted to make it clear that we are acknowledging all the critical areas. It's just not appropriate to have them all on the future land use map because it would make it very difficult to read. And that's the end of the presentation. Turn it back over to the mayor for questions and discussions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, council. Maybe Deputy Mayor Lamb, if you wanted to start.
Can you go back to the page for plan population? So are we, I'm just comparing this to the last presentation where the total projected population is thirteen thousand. And so we're taking all the middle housing out in the current version. So I'm just trying to understand why that was done.
Yeah, we're, we're not taking the middle housing out because we're required to provide it by the state. We're just not including it as the basis for our population projection that we're planning for. The guidance from PSRC, you know, was we have to basically plan for the twenty-one hundred units and the associated population. The direction we were headed before was to actually looking at the possibility of planning for more units and more people, which would again feed into the functional plans and the other elements of the plan. But the guidance we've gotten from PSRC has instructed us not to do that and to really only plan for the twenty-one hundred. So that's where we end up with the population projection of five thousand seven hundred and seventy-five people.
If, if I could add to that, the, one of the reasons why we had added the middle housing and the other unit types in addition to the twenty-one hundred was we, we believe, we, we believe that it, it would require market rate units to supplement the cost of affordable units in order for it to reasonably be delivered. PSRC doesn't disagree with that. However, based on the regional planning context, we are supposed to plan to twenty-one hundred, which is our growth target. So it's, it's a bit of a predicament that our affordable housing allocation matches directly our growth target. However, we need to stick to the twenty-one hundred, which is our growth target, and calibrate our plan to that. Whereas before, we were looking at a larger number and we were looking at potentially bringing online additional capacity through rezoning and actualizing that zone capacity with this update. Instead, what we're looking at is planning to twenty-one hundred to make sure we're planning for services and population growth according to the regional planning context. But we are also looking to add capacity for the future in the future land use map. And what that will allow is as the market calls for it or as the community calls for it, we can go through subarea planning process here in the city, which is really the right way to plan for growth that allows for more community engagement. You can do an environmental impact statement. You have enough time to get through it. And, and that will allow us to bring online that additional zone capacity. And that will nicely line up with when we start the next comp plan update, which will be ten years from two thousand and twenty-four. We'll be starting it two years early like we did with this one. So in about two thousand and thirty-two, we'll be starting that, that next update. So it, it all lines up fairly nicely. The big takeaway, the biggest takeaway for us from PSRC was, and keep in mind, PSRC is the agency that certifies our comprehensive plan, was that they will be looking first and foremost as to whether we planned and calibrated our plan to the twenty-one hundred unit growth target. So that's one of the reasons why we took one step forward. I mean, you might say we took two steps forward. We're taking one step back to the side and now back forward again. Sort of resetting our, our direction in order to ensure that we're on track with what the agency that certifies the plan will be looking for.
Okay, so what you're saying is in, in the next comp plan update, we can take a look at where we are in terms of how many affordable units we've built and then readjust at that point if needed.
And there's actually an interim step in there. There's a five-year reporting process. Jeff, you could maybe talk about that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a five-year reporting process. So, you know, the, the hope would be that, you know, we would be monitoring at least on an annual basis. And, you know, we would identify any sort of differences in what's happening growth-wise versus what we had planned for, you know, pretty early on in the process. But at the five-year mark, you're able to, through the progress report, you know, identify how things are playing out relative to what you planned for. And then Buildable Lands, you know, starts to happen, you know, a year or two, even before cities typically start. And then that would identify also the mismatch, which would feed into the whole reasonable measures process. But, you know, it's, it's not just on the city. I mean, the state and the region have set up this program, and if cities are not able to deliver it, you know, it's, it's frankly, from my professional opinion, not solely on the cities to do it. We have to be set up for success. And, you know, to be honest, in, in some ways, it, it doesn't feel like we're being set up for success. But we have to do the best with what we're given. And, you know, I think there's, there's opportunities to make refinements over time. Should things not play out the way we would expect.
Okay, thank you for that. Can you go back to the, the future land use map? Can you clarify wildlife bridges are indicated where habitat, and gosh, continuity? I don't know if you say that word. Should either be created or proactively protected. What does created or proactively protected mean? Are we going to be building bridges? Are we going to be not allowing development because it isn't so?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be designed not to to prevent development, but it could be something that, you know, development's happening and maybe there's a wildlife bridge that's identified on their property that doesn't impact the development, that they could, you know, restore as part of their development project. If there was a, an open space, you know, parcel that was available that was undeveloped, you know, the city or land trust might identify it. You know, as a, as a priority for acquisition. It's really meant to be a planning tool more so than a regulatory tool or to, you know, really limit development. It's sort of like the wildland urban interface. But it helps bring context to the map and identify, you know, important features that we would want to be mindful of over the next twenty years.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Howe.
Thank you. I was looking at the materials, Jeff, and I saw, you know, step one, step two, step three. And step one makes sense, step two made sense, step three also made sense. And then I read that underlying statement about the PSRC, you know, urging the caution, which you guys just talked about. Is it because they're afraid that we, we'd get ahead of ourselves? I was trying to understand if there was some underlying danger that I don't understand.
Well, David can chime in too, if he has thoughts. But I think, I think the risk that they see is that cities overplan. You base your capital facilities plan on too much growth. That could be A, unrealistic. B, could take growth from other cities that's supposed to get it. And, you know, could, could negatively impact our collective ability to achieve and accommodate the growth targets. So that's my sense of what their concern is. You know, I would counter that with, if we're trying to provide affordable housing and we know we need to provide some market rate units in order to offset it, you know, if we're not able to account for that, you know, how, how is that supposed to work? You know, if we set it up an inclusionary zoning program, so those twenty-one hundred units or a portion of those couldn't happen unless market rate units were developed. Yet we can't plan for the market rate, you know, units in the true sense. That just seems like something that, from my experiences, is not going to go away. And, and we're going to find a lot of communities, I think, in a few years, you know, having to convey that, that they haven't been entirely successful in achieving that.
Okay, that makes sense to me because as I look at the flum, I, I don't know, I don't really understand the scope of work in number, step three. It, it looks to me like you were saying kind of a planning exercise where it was changeable. It could, it would evolve over time. Certainly it would, it would evolve up to, you know, five years and then change again as you got closer to a ten-year mark. So to me, it just seems prudent to, to look ahead into the future. Because, you know, if you're in a housing crisis, which we are, that's not going to change in the short term, and short term is ten years.
Yeah, and that, that's absolutely right. And I think, you know, a lot of the zero to thirty, zero to fifty is provided by affordable housing providers, right? I mean, there's not, as I've said earlier, a market-based solution that I'm aware of that could deliver that. And, you know, they have a lot of options of where to develop and, you know, some damage may not be high on their list based on the other choices. So there's, there's quite a few things that are out of our hands. And, you know, this, if the city was interested, I mean, we could document our concerns, you know, with PSRC. Because, you know, I, I think it's put the cities in a difficult predicament. And in the case of Samamish, you know, we were collectively trying to go in a direction that we thought could really give us the best chance to make it happen.
Yeah.
And I feel like we've sort of lost that. And I think that, for me, is the most discouraging part of it.
I, I also want to add, thank you, Jeff, that, that the distinctive difference between what we presented to PSRC versus where we are now is what we presented and what we had presented to you all previously was that we would actually be actualizing the zoning. We'd be, we'd be activating it through rezoning. That there, there would be some fairly significant changes
Right.
to zoning on the ground versus what you're looking at here with the future land use map. The capacity is still there. It just hasn't gone through the rezone process yet. You have to go through a subarea plan to get there. And PSRC was supportive of that. That takes time to get there. It engages the community, it allows for refinement in what goes where, how it looks and feels, all of those things. And that it would be, behoove us to plant policy in our comp plan that directs us to take on subarea planning in a way that, that, that provides capacity as it's needed and that brings it online in alignment with future updates to the comprehensive plan and, and zoning controls.
I agree with you.
And to plan for that. And to plan for that.
I, I agree with you, and I support that. Doing nothing is not a plan. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add, we did do that. We did that in 2003 with our comp plan when we had a vision for the town center. So we've been through this process before, and we can relate to it. So it is, it is a big planning effort for us to take on, but it gives us the opportunity, like David said, to do that community outreach and to do that analysis, to get a subarea plan that works for the city and helps us accomplish our goals.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah. Couple of questions. One on the flume, is that what we're really calling it? On the future land use map. I can't say flume with a straight face. I appreciate that we put the wildlife mapping on there, but what I don't see is the human connectivity other than the road. So is there any particular reason why we don't have trails and other connectivity of how people will move around? Because I still feel like that's more important, right? How people connect needs to happen.
Absolutely. And this is just an example of what could be included on it. The comprehensive plan will include other panels that could be layered on top of this that might be a ped bike plan network, that might be the, the city's transportation plan and road classifications. There's, there's a wide range of things that are in our comprehensive plan today that make up our, our comprehensive plan map. However, any one panel might be added to the, the map itself. It just depends on what theme you're trying to draw out.
Sure.
In this case, it was looking at how density might align with some other constraints such as King County's wildlife map. So that, that's straight out of King County's 2020 comprehensive plan. The wooie is an interesting one that's coming your way soon. You would have heard about it with the building code updates. However, those are delayed until November because of what's going on with the Washington State Building Code Council. But we're going to be seeing some, some fairly significant changes to building codes that relate to the, the wooie.
Again, you can't say that with a straight face.
The wildland urban interface, which, which is a lot related to building codes and fire prevention. So that's one we wanted to show early that so you might get an idea of what part of the city would be affected by additional restrictions, not on density, but on things related to safe, safe, you know, safe clear zones, building materials that might be required to be used, all those types of things. So keep in mind that this here itself is, is not like a final flume. This is a concept for the purpose of discussion. And what I'm hearing here is that it would be really great for us to have a, a full dynamic future land use map that where you could choose which layers you want to look at for whatever thematic purpose you're, you're using the map for.
Yeah, I want to go back to the old encyclopedia days where you had like the different transparencies, right? And you can choose which one. So I think it would be great to have, you know, kind of just the, the future land use and the subarea planning required. And then we can have the different assets that you can layer one or more on at a time. But I think it's really important that we kind of, if we're going to list certain things, we list all the things that are, you know, of equal or more importance so that it doesn't appear like we don't care how people move around. And I bring that up partially in the larger context of this whole 2100, right? We have to build 2100 affordable units, but we can only build 2100 units, which we all know is completely unreasonable and will never, ever, ever happen. And I just, I mean, I just think we have to say it really plainly, like, that's not going to happen, period. I, I think I said to you, Scott, today, show me a place on the planet, ever, where that has ever happened. And the answer is nowhere, right? So maybe, and Jeff, this kind of speaks to the, you know, I think we should document our concerns and maybe ask PSRC, quite bluntly, for how they want us to prioritize the CPPs. Because if their rationale for you can only plan for 2100, period, is because we want to be in line with the CPPs, well, the CPPs also say we have to build 2100 affordable units. And the CPPs also say we have to look at other certain things around vehicle miles traveled and other environmental and social justice issues, right? So what's the prior, priority order on those? Because I have this vision of us at the five-year mark submitting our report, and we're on track with our 2100, but we're nowhere near on track with our 2100 affordable units and us getting smacked, smacked around. So, I'm sorry, Councilmember Trane, did you have something to interrupt me?
Yeah, that's just gonna, that's gonna be every city.
I'm sorry. I have the floor. Thank you. I have the floor.
Well, you asked.
Well, no, I heard you talking. So I think it's really important that we potentially document our sort of list of questions or concerns and ask PSRC to prioritize that for us. Because some of those things are going to be mutually exclusive at this point, and I think it's important to get that clarity. I also, just recently traveled. I think traveling is so important because we learn so much when we travel. And one of the things that I saw in traveling to Barcelona was that a large section of that city was planned and developed back in the late 1800s and early 1900s. And you know what they did? They did it right. They actually planned for the future far in advance. So even though it was planned for horse and buggies, it actually works for cars and other traffic because they planned for pedestrian walkways, because they planned for things that were wide enough that they now have bike lanes on every, bike lanes and bus lanes pretty much on every single street. Their intersections are hexagonal. The buildings don't come to a point that cut them off. That makes the intersections more open. That allows space for parking, and it allows for safer pedestrian crossways. I bring this up only because I think we have this, just like Barcelona did back in 1890, we have this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity as we're looking at the town center and planning that out to make sure that we really do it right and how we look at building out the infrastructure and the appropriate density. We don't have 20 to 34-year-olds, Jeff. I don't think we have to do, dig very deeply to understand why. It's because they can't afford it. And you're, I think you're going to start to see that number go up. I think if you start digging deeper into those demographic numbers, it's not even 20 to 34-year-olds. It's probably 20 to 40-year-olds. People can't afford to live here until they are much further into their careers. And, you know, there's probably not a huge stretch as to why certain cities are seeing declines in their school populations because young families can't afford to live in these cities. So I think it's really important as we look at those things, how, how do we balance that? Because we don't want to see a decline necessarily in our families. We don't want to only have high school families, right? We want families of all ages. So how do we really prioritize those things and plan for those things? So I just throw that out there. I think it's really important as we plan for the town center that we do it right. We do it right today so that 100 years or 140 years from now, people can say, wow, it still works because we did it right.
And, and those are great comments. I, I think we can keep, we, we do plan to keep working with PSRC, King County, Department of Commerce, all really important partners in our comp plan update. The one thing that I will say is, is what you're highlighting is the subarea planning process and the importance that it plays in, in looking at existing conditions, thinking about what the, what the vision is.
But I don't think we can wait 10 years, David, to do a subarea planning effort on the town center. Because in 10 years, quite a bit of it will probably be underway or at least permits already submitted, and then it will be too late to go back and fix it.
And, and you'll see one thing we do say in the agenda bill for this evening is that what we're looking at with, what, what we're looking at is some limited rezoning and some limited adjustment to our zoning controls. One area that would be up for discussion would be the town center.
Yes. I think that still has to be on the table. I think the other centers taking more time and figuring that out probably makes a lot of sense. But I think for town center, the time is now. And if we don't act now, we're going to miss that once-in-a-lifetime opportunity.
The, so the, the one thing, just in rounding this up, to keep in mind, is we, we, so we have a, we have a growth, we have a current capacity today based on our analysis done through the urban growth capacity study that started back in 2019. We have a growth target of 2100 units. We have an affordable housing allocation of 2100 units. And with that allocation, we're, we're supposed to, take a step back, we have a growth target of 2100 units, and we're supposed to calibrate our comp plan for services and growth based on that number.
Right.
And that's what PSRC will be looking for. We have a 2100 unit housing allocation, and we're supposed to demonstrate that we are planning for, we've removed, we've removed barriers for, and we have capacity for the 2100 units of, of housing allocation.
Affordable.
Of whatever it might be for whatever city. But what PSRC is looking for is, are you meeting the state law requirement? And are you demonstrating that for your housing allocation, in our case, it's affordable? Other cities like CTAC, they have a high number of above 120%.
Right.
It's just the way it's all played out. You can look at the dashboard that King County has and, or, and see how it's all played out. However, what, what PSRC is looking for is, have you demonstrated capacity? Have you removed all barriers? And what are you doing to plan for that housing? You don't have to fund it.
Right.
But you have to show that you've removed all the barriers from it happening, including the, the emergency housing, which is another number that's in there. Then we have the, the city's future land use capacity, excuse me. And with that, we can do some limited rezoning. What, what PSRC is saying is that they don't want your capacity to be so out of whack with your, your, your growth target
Right.
that it causes a potential regional imbalance.
Totally get that. And I don't want us to plan for anything crazy. But I do think that we should be looking at the town center subarea planning now as part of this comprehensive plan update because waiting five or eight or eight years, right, to do that, I think, is too late for a big section of that. I really do. And I think that we have to, we have to be thinking along a 20-year plan that we know that this will get recalibrated along the way. Because there's every, every reason to believe that at five years, when all the cities provide their updates and no one is hitting their affordable housing numbers, that there might be some new guidance that comes out. And if we, if we wait too long to look at that, we're going to be so far behind the eight ball, it's going to be another 10 or 15 years before we can do it. So I, I still think we need to be looking at the town center because we have a green space, right? We have a green field that most cities don't have that opportunity to be looking at, how do we do this right from the beginning? I want to, I want people to be looking back on Sammish and say, we did it right, and 140 years later, it still works. It's possible. We have the technology, we have the knowledge, we have the foresight. It's just a matter of whether we choose to do it or not.
Councilmember Trane?
Yeah, then we probably shouldn't walk into any development agreements anytime soon if we don't have a plan. So David always goes back to my original statement that I stood up here at the council in 2018 or 17 is, who are we? And do we have a plan for buildout? So again, it's back to that. But with that being said, I'd just say this is the most exciting piece of information I've seen since the repeal of a resolution. I, oh, I'm sorry. That's breaking the council rules. Don't mean to share my personal story there. Sorry. But I do appreciate, to get back to my point, was that by following the state law, regional policy, Vision 2050, guidance from PRC, hitting our growth targets. Quick question, because I want to add one other group in here. Has, have you been talking with King County planners?
So we, we do participate in a regional forum of King County planning directors. So all the cities participate in that in King County. We do also meet with King County staff. There, it depends on what, King County's pretty big, so it depends on which division.
Right. So I, I would just say the planners, because that's, that's the group I was going to list here on my, that's on my list here. So you're speaking with the King County planners and the information that you're, oh, and you've gone through the process of even bringing this information already to our planning commission.
Yes, this was delivered to me a few weeks ago.
And now we're sitting here today. So I just wanted to just say that I'm in, I, I think it's great that you guys, we're starting to work on a future land use map. If it could be interactive and show buildout, now I'm, I'm totally stoked. The other thing I would say that Jeff asked us if we wanted that 75,000 number, I'd say we go below. So we should move, move forward without that at this time and then look at the 10-year update. That'll come available and we'll see. Since he's showing one of the models is there showing us below that number, I think, I think he's working on it. I do have a, I do have some concerns, because you're looking for some information, I take it, is that the map doesn't show my corridors. So for wildlife corridors, I, I see them on here. I see where they can go. I see some fragmentation that could take place. And so I just was hoping that we could continue to work towards, instead of building barriers, we could actually remove barriers. And so I'm a little concerned about the, what are you guys calling this one? It's the pink striped one. The prospective town center. I'd be a little bit, like to know more about that when that comes forward. So that's a huge concern for me. The other thing is, I'm also, I'd like to see how we're going to continue to work with our neighboring cities to protect the critical and sensitive areas that are in our city, but then connect us to our other cities and in unincorporated King County. So you have Redmond, unincorporated King County, and Issaquah. And mainly that's, that, I mean, Laughing Jacobs Creek, what's going down to the preserve, how we're going to handle the critical areas to the north. So I think that's still coming to us. Yeah, that takes care of that. Oh, the other issue that I was wondering if you guys, is climate change. Is, is that one of the reasons for the wildlife urban interface is because of starting to address climate change issues?
Yeah, this was a requirement of House Bill 1181, that our land use element include reference to the wooie as well as hazard mitigation, which is work that's coordinated through King County. So yes, this was a new requirement that recent legislation passed.
Yeah, that's, I thought that's good. That's where we were headed. I'm glad I understand that. Thank you very much. And then the last one would be the connectivity and systems completions. I understand that that's a little bit more on the public work side of thing, but I'm also looking at the comprehensive plan update as a whole, that each of these pieces do interact with each other. And so if, if there's a way that Scott or Plant Public Works and you guys could work on how are we going to make it so that it's actually, there is connectivity within the city? And then also then connecting out to our neighbors. And then the last would be, how do we connect a way for people to move safely? And since we don't have bike lanes on 228, how do we move, if I'm on a bike, how do I move safely east and west and north and south through the city? And that's more of a, I know that's more of an Audrey question, but it's also, if I have some wildlife corridors and I have neighborhoods that are not dense, then I could move traffic on bikes or electric vehicles in a safe manner that would be away from 228.
These are helpful comments. These are the types of comments that, you know, that you, we're hearing from you all tonight that are really helpful, not just with the future land use map or the flume, but, but also with the work we're going to be doing on the different elements going forward. So hearing some of this now helps us start to, to do our, our gap analysis and look at the different elements as we take those apart and bring that back to you. You'll be seeing a lot from us in the fall and into the winter as we really ramp up. Once we settle the, the future land use map, at least the base of the future land use map, we then start to take apart each of the different required elements and look at how it all fits together. So thank you.
Thanks, David.
Councilmember Howe?
I just had a question. It had to do with your other comment about the action alternative. I mean, that seemed to make sense to me, but it also sounded like it's a right now thing. So to Council- So to Councilmember Stewart's point, isn't that something that would activate now if it was a direction?
Some of it would.
I see.
Yeah, so there's, if you go through the different, there's the existing capacity based on the urban growth capacity study. Then there's the growth target of 2100 units.
Right.
And these are all things that have happened in chronological order that have led to where we are today. Then there's the housing allocation. And now we're in the comp plan update, and we're supposed to make sense of the existing capacity, the growth target, and the housing allocation. And there are some things that PSRC said are reasonable to do, some limited adjustments to capacity that doesn't put your capacity out of whack or out of sync with regional planning. So there are some opportunities for some rezones or some future land use map changes and some zoning map changes.
Strategic.
Strategic, such as reworking the zoning and the density of the town center is an example. Another would be rezoning an area, for example, right around the park, the Park and Ride by Pine Lake, that that is an area that is a potential bonus parcel that's in public ownership. There's quite a bit you could do with that property for housing if they were partners. And looking at the synergy that brings around it, so rezoning around that. Another example is, there's some area of low-density residential immediately to the west of town center that is a great opportunity to add some middle housing zoning, so like an R-18 or something like that. And we, you know, it is somewhat greenfield development, large lots ripe for redevelopment, so that would make strategic sense. There are some other limited areas in the city that you would look at adding some capacity for middle housing for local need. That wouldn't necessarily bring the 0 to 30% housing, but it would provide for some additional housing types and local need. And then beyond that, you would then take on subarea planning to really add the big capacity going forward and to bring that online as each subarea plan was complete leading into the 2034 update, which would start around 2032.
Because it just looks like a decent framework to get actually moving and to even learn from what you just did, to figure out, oh, did that work? Yes or no? So I mean, I would be supportive of the action alternative.
Thank you.
And the nightclub.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
I just wanted to say that I support the action alternative as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is really great. And I do think if there ever is a GIS, something that we can actually play with, I don't know how many layers that would be. It seems like we could go on forever. So I don't know how many more you would actually add to this, you know? You know, we have some like pedestrian, bike, wildlife corridors, you know, but I just don't know where that ends. So if anyone has a great idea. Oh.
As part of the online version of the plan, we can embed a GIS map that has all the layers of the flume, bike network, street network. We can add, you know, really any layers we want, and then folks could turn them on and off. So I think that would be a great addition to the final product.
Yeah, that sounds good. But yeah, I support where we're at. I like the idea of the subarea planning since we're kind of stuck now anyway. So I appreciate the update. Yeah, I guess we'll see what we have to do next. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, one thing I forgot to mention, Jeff, in the numbers you presented previously where we have roughly 10,000 people commuting into Seattle, again, as we're looking to prioritize, you know, all the different elements that we start pulling together, that to me seems like a huge opportunity of reducing vehicle miles traveled, of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, et cetera, of finding ways to optimize their commute, right? So again, kind of like you did with the housing toolkit, where you sort of listed, like, here's all the different things that this checks off. As we start to move through our different options for where we want to, you know, incentivize or disincentivize certain things from happening, I feel like there's a lot of different priorities that we're trying to meet and figuring out which ones of the things that we do will check the most boxes and provide the most value to the community. I don't think I have to remind anybody that I think we are experiencing globally right now, right, record-breaking temperatures, where we've actually broken all-time records ever recorded on the planet in multiple countries right now. So focusing on how we reduce greenhouse gas emissions from commuting and other things, including development, right, any new development, those 2100 homes that are developed, how do we develop them with the least amount of impact possible? I think all of those are really important. Thanks.
All right. I'm not seeing any other hands. Obviously, this will be coming back a million times, I'm sure, in a good way.
Well, we're hoping to start to turn the corner, as we do need to start focusing on the different elements.
Awesome.
And so we'll be working with the city manager to figure out what the next steps are and what the appropriate turning point is for us to put the land use component behind us. Not, that doesn't mean we can't revisit it. However, we really need to switch gears in our conversation and get into some of the, I guess, more fun components of the comp plan and talk about, you know, services and things that we want in the community in order to provide for the growth target of 2100 units.
Great. Well, thank you both, and Jeff, and Evan. I'm sure we will see you in September, probably the first meeting, I'm sure. Yeah, great. Yeah, thank you all.
Great, thank you.
This is great.
Thank you.
Scott, you want to start with the city manager report, if you have one?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick one. Just want to remind that Tuesday, August 1st, is National Night Out. There is information on the city's police services website about National Night Out, and you can register your block. And if you do, let us know. We are going to try to get out, our police departments are going to try to come around to as many as possible that are registered. And I'd like to invite any council members that would like to do that as well. Deputy City Manager and I are also going to be going out and visiting neighborhoods and encouraging, the goal of the National Night Out is to encourage creation of block watches and getting, neighbors getting to know each other a little bit more. So we're encouraging people to get out in the street and get to know your neighbors. And if you're willing to register and let us know, we're happy to come out and say hi and check in with you. So wanted to remind everyone about that. And just a reminder for the general public that council takes a break after this for the August recess. However, obviously, city services are open during that time period. Just want to remind everyone. So with that, thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Trane?
Yeah, it's written there, but it's all in the report there. Good websites to go and look at if you need information on transit.
Cool, thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb?
So I attended the Public Issues Committee meeting last Wednesday, and one of the big topics of discussion was setting councils' salaries. I think this would be a worthwhile conversation for us to have in the future, more along the lines of how do we encourage, how do we make it more equitable so that more people in the community can, will want to run for city council and for commissioned positions? So, you know, one of the cities that was there was Issaquah, and they talked about how they just had sort of a review and they added health benefits as one of the options. They added a stipend in addition to council salary. Or they just added just a stipend for people that could serve on commission just to offset like the small cost of travel or whatever. I just think that whatever we can do to encourage more people to run, that would be great. And, you know, this wouldn't even affect us as we are currently serving. It would take effect if we choose to do anything in the next term. So, but maybe that's something we could discuss during our next council retreat.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Howe?
Just briefly, Eset Fran and Resco has added Mercer Island to their list of areas that they will provide services. The thing I'll mention, though, is that that press release went out seconds after the vote took place, and I don't think we knew about that. And I think, I'm not sure if it's a missed opportunity from our communications department or not, to be honest. I truly can't, I don't know. But it's the type of thing that if, when this type of thing happens, maybe we have a role or we should be also doing something ourselves. Duval is the next opportunity where this may happen again. This, weirdly, Duval is looking at Redmond, providing services. Redmond retracted their proposal. They were asked to give it back, which I didn't think you could do that, but apparently you can. And so I don't know if Duval is looking for a bargaining position, which is potentially the deal. But we're still also in contention for that. But I just wanted to make the council aware of kind of where those negotiations are at, that it's still in play, but it's a bit odd.
And is Mercer Island all services? Because I know Woodinville is not all.
I don't know if it's all services. Fire, rescue, but maybe not like wildfire types of stuff.
Yeah, the emergency management stuff, that's what I was wondering. Okay. Cool. Thank you. Anybody else? Awesome. Councilmember Trane?
Move to adjourn.
Second, halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, good night, everybody. See you in September. Good night.